Okay. Council, it appears you have some background noise. No, it appears that it's gone now. You're fine, sir. Thank you. Okay.
I'm trying to listen via the camera Cathy and it's not saying that webcam spaces are being used.
Okay.
Hang on.
Andrew, is it possible?
Hang on.
You may be okay now.
I think it was actually coming around prior to Andrew jumping off.
Okay, it holds for six and we only have the deputy city clerk showing so that she can show the time limits when people are addressing council. If you'd prefer, we can certainly have Brittany come out and Andrew go in. It's whatever council's preferences.
Fine either way.
Okay, so at this time Mayor, the meeting has opened up so that all the attendees are present and you may begin whenever you are ready, sir.
Good evening. The platform we are using this evening has a raised hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address the council, you can click the button and be given an opportunity to address council. Please stand for such allegiance.
San, One Nation.
But city clerk, please call the hall.
Mayor Scully.
Here.
Counsel Galloway.
Here.
Ms. Christian.
Here.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Powell. Counsel Powers. Counsel Powers, you're being some muted.
Here.
Thank you. Counsel Reese.
Here.
Counsel Emily.
Here.
Form present.
Our first presentation tonight is regarding fleet management proposal and will be made by James Adams from Enterprise Fleet Management.
Hello, everyone. I appreciate you guys allowing me 10 to 15 minutes to speak to everybody today via video and webinar. I will go through the brief presentation and then open it up for questions that you may have. Does everybody have the six-page? I'm not going to make use of that as a reference point. Well, I will start on just a little bit of background on who Enterprise is and how we helped others throughout the state of New York. So Enterprise Fleet Management is a part of Enterprise Holdings. Enterprise Holdings operates Enterprise Rent-A-Car, Enterprise Truck Rental, Enterprise Car Sales. We have over 2 million vehicles out on the road and why that's important to our government partners is we have a lot of data coming into our systems that allows us to provide strong fleet recommendations to our partners. In upstate and western New York, we have 48 partners that are government entities, including three in St. Lawrence County. Those include St. Lawrence County, which we formed a partnership in 2016, St. Lawrence Lewis Boses, as well as SUNY Canton. We started sitting down with Tim Johnson in the city of Augensburg about three years ago in reviewing your fleet of vehicles. Your total vehicles are 40 light-duty, medium-duty vehicles, as well as police and fire department that fall into the niche that we would be able to help the city of Augensburg with. The current fleet situation for the city of Augensburg is 86% of your light-duty vehicles are over five years old, 35% of your vehicles are over 10 years. Older vehicles have higher fuel costs, maintenance costs, intend to be more unreliable and unsafe for your employees to be in. Enterprise put together a proposal that would allow the city to save over 1.2 million vehicles over the next eight years. The way we would do this is help by utilizing an open-end lease as the funding structure, allowing you to acquire additional vehicles while avoiding a large capital budget outlays. This will allow you to replace your older vehicles with newer safer models, which will decrease fuel and maintenance expenses. This will also allow the city to create a proactive replacement plan that will maximize potential equity at time of resale and create a plan that is very sustainable and easy for the city to budget. This will take your current average replacement time from 14 years to five years. So today, on average, when the city buys a vehicle, you are keeping it in your fleet for 14 years. The longest vehicles would be remaining in the fleet with this proposal would be five years. Within open-end lease, there are differences from your typical lease structure that many are familiar with. One of the big differences is there are no early termination penalties, no over-mileage penalties, and no abnormal wear and tear penalties. The reason why is because in an open-end equity lease, we are financing the vehicle down to a reduced book value. At the end of the lease structure, you have several options. One of those options is you could write a check and purchase the vehicle for the reduced book value. The most common option is having Enterprise sell that vehicle for you. If Enterprise sells that vehicle for you, the equity in the vehicle or the amount of profit from resale versus the reduced book value goes back to the city of Augensburg. If you flip over to the next page, we'll go into a bit of the different programs and services that we provide. While this partnership and this proposal today is allowing Tim Johnson to execute agreements with Enterprise Fleet Management on acquisition and funding, other programs that we have include fuel programs, maintenance programs, aftermarket customization programs. We help license, title, register all vehicles. We have safety programs. We also have insurance, telematics, or GPS programs. We can help with any costs that could be involved with operating a vehicle in your fleet. At the bottom of that page, you will see several of our partners throughout the state of New York, including the three that I referenced earlier that are part of St. Lawrence County. Several other cities that we partner with include City of Rome, City of Oneida, and City of Buffalo. One of the things that we talked earlier about was the average age of the fleet. With 35% of your vehicles being over 10 years old, several of the vehicles do not have the same amount of airbags, anti-lock brakes, and have not passed the same crash tests that vehicles that are newer than 2010 would have been put through. In 2012, one of the largest safety improvements to vehicles since the invention of seat belts was put in play, and that would be electronic stability control, which is very important in our train in the northern country where snow is prevalent. This prevents a vehicle from tipping over when it gets out of control or loses traction. Every year, vehicles continue to be built safer and are put through more rigorous testing to ensure that everybody is safe. By keeping your vehicles five years or newer, your vehicles will consistently be safer than they are today. We talked earlier about the open-end equity lease structure. In this next slide, I'll go through that in a little bit more detail. This does allow you to maximize your cash flow while replacing more vehicles than you typically would within your budget. On average, over the past five years, you have replaced three vehicles per year. This program will allow you to replace, on average, more than 10 vehicles per year while saving over $1.2 million. More importantly, from a flexibility standpoint, the open-end lease does not tie you into any long-term contracts or anything that you cannot get out of if you wanted to sell a vehicle early. In fact, we help numerous government entities sell vehicles earlier than they anticipated based on current market conditions. For example, we are now going through the third wave of trucks that we have sold for St. Lawrence County prior to the end of their original term in order to reduce their current lease payments and take advantage of the current market from a resale standpoint. Your account team will continuously look at these opportunities to maximize the equity in your current fleet and minimize your long-term total cost of owning and operating your vehicles. The next two slides are more for a reference point. In going through in detail, as they have been presented in the past, including at a 2019 council meeting, the fleet profile is the makeup of your current fleet at the time this analysis was put together, based on the year make model of your vehicle, as well as the average annual mileage travel. The replacement schedule and replacement criteria is the replacement plan that we used to put together the fleet planning analysis that is on page six. On page six, you will see this is where we lay out the savings opportunity and how we can maximize the amount of money that goes back into your budget. The gold or orange line, depending on how you see it, in the middle of the slide that's labeled average, that is your average based off of your fleet analytics. A fleet size of 40, annual needs of three, you owned all 40, average purchase expense, maintenance expense, fuel, and fleet budget. We then put into place eight years of the replacement plan coming to an eight-year savings opportunity. This has also been recommended to Tim by the New York FRB. At this time, I will open it up to you guys for questions.
All right, I'd like to ask you something. Every time you change a car or fire, who pays to do the cages and the lights and sirens and all that stuff?
Yes, so we can handle as much of that as you would like us to. We can also work with outfitters to see what items can be reused. For example, if the body hasn't changed a whole lot, some parts are going to be able to be reused. Maybe the cage can be taken out of one utility interceptor and put into the next, or maybe the lights can be reused, radio equipment be reused. That is something we will work with your team to ensure that we minimize the aftermarket expense.
All right, thank you. How many, uh, how many police vehicles will there be?
Uh, within the first year remaining, within year one, there were two police vehicles that were part of this proposal. We did include every police vehicle on this list. We can always add vehicles for people if your police department ends up downsizing by a vehicle. That vehicle can Could you guys hear that? See some people shaking their hands?
There was a lot of background noise for me.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We included every police vehicle that's currently in your fleet in the plan to be replaced over the next four to five years. With that being said, we have worked with a number of our government entities to help them downsize certain vehicles. So if there are vehicles that you need to be taken out of your fleet, we can help make recommendations, help sell those vehicles.
Any other questions, anyone?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had my Okay, if I speak.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if, if this was a quote where you competed with other companies on, um, if it was open and competitive, or if it was sole source. And I'm wondering, with the pandemic, I know that prices have come down significantly for leased vehicles as well as new buyers. I'm just wondering if this is an old proposal where the cost savings is somehow reflected here?
Yes, I can answer that question. There is somebody that does have a lot of background noise. I So this proposal All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
This proposal was completed prior to the current pandemic situation. One thing that Enterprise does is we work with the manufacturer on a national level as well as the state level to make sure we are maximizing all incentive. So as incentives increase, you will be able to take advantage of those. Enterprise will be able to decide the incentive that you are allowed to be a government entity. You will not lose out on any incentives as part of this program. The entity that in due diligence process that Tim and the city have chosen is to piggyback off of Orange County's RFP in order to enterprise
So it wasn't an open competitive quote then with other companies hitting on it then?
Well, it was. It was an open request for proposal that a county put out there.
But not, but not for the city of Augensburg.
Correct. It was not an open quote or RFP that was put out there. But it is a proposal that others are allowed to piggyback off of.
Do you see savings? Do you see costs going down because of the situation that the economy's in? Do you see the savings for us?
The current state of the manufacturer in automotive industry is that there are some increased incentives for vehicles. We are looking at a proactive plan going out eight years. I don't want to overstate the savings that this current situation is going to mean over an eight-year period.
Okay. Um, are there any further questions? I guess that's, that's it. Are you comfortable with the presentation? You got everything in?
Yes, a little awkward not doing it in person. But you know, at some point, hopefully I can meet you all in person.
Yeah, I agree. This is, uh, this is difficult. Well, well, thank you for that presentation. We have a resolution and we'll be voting shortly. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Um, our next presentation is regarding the acting fire chief position and will be made by Alan Rickett, President of the Augensburg Firefighters Local 1799.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. My presentation's not going to be quite that long. It's going to be quick and to the point so we can move things along. So, good evening, Mayor Scully and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to address an important issue affecting the Augensburg Fire Department and the citizens we serve. We're all aware of the difficult and unprecedented times we're going through. As you know, our department is tasked with the responsibility to respond to emergencies that place ourselves at risk in order to assist others. The COVID pandemic has created an additional stress that has increased that level of risk. Even though we seem to be through the worst, there's still much work to be done. Many of these risks are diminished with a complete command staff. These, the levels of command are a critical part of the structure of any public safety organization. We have been operating without a chief or acting chief for a month. There are three problems with that scenario. First, the continuity within the department is lacking. When you're changing chiefs every two days, small yet important items fall through the cracks. Second, the cost to taxpayers is an additional $3,343 per month operating without a daytime chief, and that is the bare minimum cost. That figure does not account for any overtime, something which the council wants to reduce. Third, in the city charter, Article 12, C42, Section 8, there shall be a department of fire, the head of which shall be the fire chief. The city charter clearly states our department has to have a fire chief. We ask you to appoint Gerald Mack, acting chief for 90 days. This resolution does not tie your hands in any way, shape, or form. It shows fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers and allows for direct leadership within our department. Um, now before I open up the questions, a couple of things I want to hit on. Somebody, I believe, Councilman Fisher brought up a couple, maybe a month or two ago, about the qualifications and whatnot. In 2018, before 2018, all you had to do was a fire officer one to be a career fire chief. In 2018, it got changed to fire officer two. In 2019, it got changed to fire officer three or fire officer two with 60 college credits. Now, in 2018, there were two fire officer two classes offered in New York State. That being said, at the time, we were not in the need of a fire chief. Nobody took those classes. In 2019, one fire officer two class was offered. No fire officer three classes were offered. So we cannot get those qualifications for anybody interested in the position. But just before the COVID-19 pandemic hit, we were starting to work on the qualifications. Obviously, New York State shut down along with the classes. But all of our officers, with the exception of one, were able to get fire officer two qualification. So that's the qualifications and the little history on there. I guess right now, any questions from anybody?
Are you, Al, it's John Rees. Are you, are you claiming, uh, out of shift, out of title, paying 24 hours a day?
I'm sorry, Counsel Reese. I couldn't really hear you. There's a lot of background. There's a lot of background noise.
Sorry about that. I was wondering if you're, if you're claiming, uh, out of title, pay 24 hours a day for the fire chiefs right now?
Correct.
Why, why would that be when the fire chief is generally only there for eight hours a day?
That's a good question. So when you have a daytime permanent or an acting fire chief in that role, he's responsible 24/7. He gets paid at this time, if you were to appoint an acting fire chief, he gets paid 40 hours a week, out of title pay, to be the fire chief. And basically, it goes to salary, you know, it's a salary position. Right now, we change chiefs every shift. Whether that officer is, he is now responsible, whether it's a 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM shift, or a 5:00 PM to 7:00 AM shift. You have to have somebody responsible in that capacity.
I understand. Thank you.
So you're saying that he has been paying this all along?
Can you repeat that again, Mayor Scully?
The, you're, has, has the city been paying these four assistant chiefs?
Yes, they've been getting out of title pay since Assistant Chief McCarthy was done the appointment of acting chief.
And council wasn't, council wasn't told of this?
Council was told of this. Council was told. We got an email and, and we've been told of this.
All right, okay, Dan. Thank you. So you're, you're saying that with jobs on the line, that the fire department is going to take over $51,000 more from this city at this time?
We don't want to. Mayor Scully.
Don't do it. And please don't do it. We just
Then please appoint an acting fire chief. That is all we ask. It is, it is a win-win for everybody.
It's, uh, a win would be to make a sacrifice and do a little extra to help the city through this situation and save a job. That's, that's, that's a job. That's a job. Over $51,000 is a job saved in the city. But if you guys want to take that money and, and from the city, then take it and enjoy it. Spend it well.
We do not want to do this. This is, this is why I'm pressing counsel tonight.
No one's forcing anyone.
We have a contract. These officers have duties. Right now, you're forcing them to go above and beyond. So in our contract, we have an article, out of title pay. Do more work, you get more money. We don't want to go that road. You're forcing us down this road.
It's, it must be a hardship forcing you to take that extra money. Thank you.
All you have to do is appoint one person as a five-day-a-week chief. You're not backfilling. You're not hiring anybody to replace that person.
No, because it would be nice to have that savings and have a commitment to helping the city through a financial distress, but just enjoy that month.
Best-case scenario.
That's just fucked up.
You're still at 50 hours a week.
That's nice.
Really, Counselor?
You're at 50 hours a week. So, it's still a savings to appoint a five-day-a-week chief. I, I don't...
Right, Mr. Rickett, Mr. Rickett, let me tell you a story about a city employee who went on her own time and shoveled sidewalks. Her house is on the land bank to save the money from paying the DPW. She went and did it. And she's our actual city manager right now. She went and did it on her own.
Well, this, this isn't a negotiation. We're not here to negotiate. The fire department and the union is going forward with a request.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Counselor, was I not talking? I'm sorry, Counselor, was I not talking?
It's a point of order. You're talking about a story that's not relevant to the conversation.
It, it is relevant. It, it's a commitment to help the city through a time of, of financial distress.
That, that is, we are completely committed. We, we help every day. We're, we're asking for a little help. And it's going to be financially responsible for this decision to happen.
Well, I, I, again, Counselor Powers says we're not in a debate, so I guess that'll end this conversation. Thank you.
No, we're not. Who says the conversation's over? I, I made an initial point of order.
Go ahead.
Conversation. It's a order.
Go ahead.
I just made reference to it. Fact of the matter is, the, the fire department's union is stepping forward with a request for a fire chief. Nothing is wrong with that. And having a, having a, 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 an issue that's irrelevant to their situation is not... Is this a negotiation? This is to be done with the fire management, and that's where it ends. If the charter calls for a fire chief, we should have a fire chief.
Any further discussion? Anything else, uh, Mr. Rickett?
I, I guess all I have to say before, uh, I go is, we're, we're not trying to tie the hands. We understand we're looking at the possibility of combining fire, police, supervision. This isn't tying the hands. Obviously, that plan isn't put into place right now. This is just to get us through 90 days right now. We have one person in charge rather than a committee. We understand how that works. It doesn't work well. It doesn't matter the scenario, it doesn't work. We're just asking for 90 days right now until you guys can get together when all of this is done and potentially come up with a better plan. That's all I have.
Anyone, uh, wish to...
Any other questions from any other council members?
Uh, just one. You don't feel that the next four highest-ranking firefighters with 107 years of combined experience wouldn't be a better pick?
Than who?
Than, than a captain? An actual assistant fire chief? But absolutely not. You don't?
I believe an assistant fire captain is a fine choice for fire chief.
Okay, well, under the assistant fire chief, just so if you, since you're, you know, requires qualifications, and I think that the city did the fire department an injustice by not making sure that you're, you're, you have the properly trained people to come forward and be promoted. But, under the assistant fire chief, even the features of the class, the assistant fire chief exercises full control of the department activities in the absence of the chief. Not the captain.
Oh, correct, but we have to have a chief on to be absent, correct?
Well, you've got one that's absent, correct?
We don't have a chief. He can't be absent if we don't have one.
Uh, Mr. Rickett?
Thank you.
No, excuse me for a second. Counselor, Counselor Fisher, the way I read that is, we have a fire chief, correct? He takes a day off? Yes, assistant chief can take care of those duties for a day. Not for one month, two months, three months, so on and so forth. These are the responsibilities that they pop up on a day-to-day basis. If the chief happens to have a day off, a vacation day, a personal day.
Well, I, if I, if I reading your Article 12 in your contract out of title, um, the last, the last paragraph, the last sentence, it says, "Works per diem based on shall reflect the difference between his regular salary and he would, then he would receive if promoted to that regularly high, higher title." Well, obviously, nobody's been promoted and you don't have one. So, the assistant fire chief, by the definition of its, its own name, means that they are the next to be in charge. Just like a lieutenant would be in the police department.
Yes, I, I can agree with you more. If we have a chief that is not there for the day, we do not have a fire chief.
I'm talking, well, it's every day right now.
Yeah, exactly. We are well aware of that.
So, thank you.
Mr. Rickett?
No other questions? Yes.
Yeah. Um, does, um, does a fireman require a license to drive the fire truck to a fire?
Yes.
Do all your firemen have licenses?
No.
And yet, that's okay, but you can't work out of title for a, a short time for the city?
For, we've been doing it for a short time.
And how long have we had? How, how many firemen? Mr. Rickett, how many firemen don't have licenses?
One. And he does not drive any apparatus.
And you don't see that as an issue?
It does not hurt us like not having a fire chief.
But it, does it hurt you?
No.
Okay. Well, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
It's Nicole. Um, do we have the attorney? I know that Counselor Powers requested him. Is he on this meeting tonight to help us with some of these questions?
I can't, only see you, so, you few, so, uh, well, ask Kathy, please. She can see everyone.
Kathy, um, is the attorney, I know Counselor Powers requested it, um, in an email. Did, do you know if the attorney is on the call?
I'm looking through the attendees right now, and I do not see anyone listed with the attorney's name. And then, he did not receive an invitation.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Kathy, did you say you did not receive an invitation?
He did not receive an invitation. I spoke with the assistant city manager this afternoon to confirm if we should be sending a specific, um, invitation. And I was told that I didn't need to.
Okay, is, um, is that all for discussion with, uh, the fire chief? Okay. This brings us to public hearings, and we have no public hearings tonight. Um, and this brings us to, we have a proclamation tonight for National Safe Boating Week. Which I have right here. Whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in, in the United States. Nearly 80% of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by boat equipment or environment, environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, modern life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public. Whereas, the United States Coast Guard promoted Boat Smart, Boat Safe, Wear It from May 16th to May 23rd, 2020. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey M. Skelly, do hereby support the goals of Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 16th through 23rd, 2020 as National Safe Boating Week. And the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating and urge all those who boat to practice safe boating and wear a life jacket at all times. I will sign this proclamation now. And this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if you would like to address counsel, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have five minutes. Anybody? Anybody wish to speak? Does the city clerk see anyone wishing to speak?
I don't see anyone as of yet, Mayor. Um...
We can give them a minute, so?
Oh, I'm sorry. There are now two hands raised. I'll start with the first. The first is a registered attendee as David Price, and I'm going to unmute you now, sir. It appears that your microphone is open.
Can you hear me, counsel?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to first address, I, I was listening to Alan Rickett's presentation. And I would like to remind counsel and the mayor that when you have a contract, you have to, you have an obligation to uphold that contract. You have an obligation to pay whatever you've agreed to in that contract. You cannot renegotiate in the public. It's, it's, it's a violation of the, uh, Taylor Law. It's a violation of any, uh, Fair Bargaining Act. You, you cannot bargain in bad faith. Ultimately, our fire department needs a chief. And you should have listened to Alan Rickett and agreed with him rather than trying to tell a story about someone who shovels sidewalks. Um, secondly, I would like to ask a question. The, the two counselors who are unavailable to be seen on this, on this forum, were able to be seen at previous meetings. Uh, how do we know who is actually voting or who is actually asking questions when we can't see the counselor? And are we to accept the fact that their vote is valid when we don't even know who it is who's voting on their behalf?
Is, is that all?
That's all I have for you.
Could the city clerk please allow anyone else to speak, if he wants to?
Yes, Mayor, the next individual is registered as Doug Loffler. And I will unmute that person now. Doug Loffler, it appears you are self-muted. And it appears that your line is open. Can you hear me, sir? Mr. Loffler? Mr. Loffler? Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. It appears that he's had some technical difficulty. In fact, he just disappeared off my screen.
Okay, um, is there anyone else?
Oh, I believed he is back. Mr. Loffler, can you hear us? If it's okay, Mayor, I'd like to move on to the next person, and we can circle back to see if he can get his audio set.
Yes.
Okay. So, the next individual is registered as Melissa Brissette, and I'm going to unmute that person now. It appears that you are self-muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, being without a chief is incredibly irresponsible. Not only does a, a fire chief provide guidance to the department, but training, leadership, and education, and fire risk, and reduction strategies. Undoubtedly, this decision is leaving Augsburg without a chief is just another example of leadership carrying the other cheek and ignoring the responsibilities they have as a department head. The city council needs to stop micromanaging the city employees and allowing qualified men and women to do their jobs that they are fit for. Safety shouldn't be tabled or delayed. Safety should be our number-one agenda for these positions, regardless of political agendas. We need a chief. Thank you.
Mayor, the next individual is registered as Jewel LeCombe, and I will unmute that person now. It appears that you are self-muted. Jewel LeCombe, it appears you are self-muted. Okay. With your permission, Mayor, I'll move back to Mr. Loffler, Doug Loffler. It appears that you are self-muted. Mr. Loffler, can you hear us? Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Thank you. Uh, I just have a couple of questions. My, my first question is, uh, I, I know some counselors, especially Counselor Reese, has questioned the fleet thing about getting proposals. Uh, I would like to know if, how many proposals were activated for the city attorney's job, number one. Number two, I would like to know if there were local firms interviewed or considered for the city attorney's job. And number three, you know, this council, this city's been going through a lot of stuff lately, and I would think that the leadership in this community would want the city attorney on these meetings. And I'd like, as a taxpayer, I'd like to know why. On all three questions. As usual, nobody wants to answer questions to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Well, surely, as a request.
The city attorney was requested, but, uh, for some reason, I know Counselor Powers, Counselor Kennedy, and myself all requested to have the city attorney present. We've asked for this at every meeting. For some reason, it's not happening. I, I don't know.
This is the third consecutive meeting we've requested to have the city attorney present.
I think a while ago, Dan, I think you said it was, uh, not, uh, it was costly and, didn't you say that prior?
No reason to have him, yes, I, I agree, Mike, I did say that, and...
Okay, thank you.
If you don't need him, but when he's requested, I think it's, I think it's good to have him.
Do, Dan, do you, do you know about the agreement with, that Sarah made? Do you know how many people were sent out with class?
I know we got, as far as I saw, we, we only had the one answer, and that was from this particular, uh, group or attorney. Law firm, Convoy and McKay, something like that.
That's what I saw also. So, thank you. Um, is there anyone else?
Yes, the next individual is registered as Robert Grady. Mr. Grady, I'm going to unmute you now. It appears you are self-muted, sir. It appears your line is open, Mr. Grady, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
And you're all set, sir?
Uh, councilman, or councilors, um, if somebody has requested the city attorney to attend a meeting and they do not show up, I would consider that a clear violation of their duties. With everything that's been going on the last month with the city council, having legal representation is a must. It's clear that certain people in the council do not know all the ins and outs, and that's going for every... And that's going for everybody as a whole. But having the city attorney as someone to rely on for information. If they do not show up, I consider that a blatant disregard for their duties. And I would consider having somebody else fill that position. Somebody that's willing to show up and answer questions if you have one. You are paying their bills. If they choose not to show up, find somebody that will. Thank you.
The next individual is registered as Brian Mitchell. And I will unmute you now, Mr. Mitchell. It appears your line is open.
Good evening, counsel. I just got one statement. Mr. Rickett did an exceptional job pleading this case to have the fire chief placed in here temporary. And I think it's a great thing. Mr. Mayor, you just kind of gave him a direction that you need to give something up. It's about the city. It's about the finances. It's about the money. I posted on Facebook the other day, you know, four of your campaign promises. I would hope you guys took some time to review them. One of the things on there was no pay for counsel. Two out of four of you are not taking the pay. The other two are taking it. So here we are asking the fire department to give up pay and help out the city, thinking of what you guys are doing. The other thing that nobody's talked about tonight is parks and rec. Ninety degrees today. We have no things about the pool. We have no desire what the kids are going to do. Mayor, you once said, "I would not do anything to hurt the kids." I've noticed our Facebook for City Rec is gone. What are we going to have for this community and what are we going to have this summer? Before you know it, it's going to be snowing. We're going to be about a month away. We don't have any direction on this council. All it is, is four to three. You know, we're sitting here tonight just waiting for votes. And you know, it's kind of entertaining, but the predictions are in, four to three. So I'd just like to think back, if we're going to preach, think about what we're doing and look back at those campaign promises. You know, we're asking the fire department here, who's out every day protecting, saving us and saving lives, to give up money. And you sat here and said, "Well, figure it out. We're adults. Give it up." Think about us. Two out of four of you only did what you said in your campaign promises. So, as I said, we'll sit here and wait for the vote tonight. I'm sure we're going to watch another night at four to three. Thanks for your time.
Just to clarify and in defense of Counselor, I didn't take the pledge not to take pay. Only Mike Skelly and I did. And that's, we're not taking it.
Um, next?
The next individual is registered as Jewel LaComb. And we'll circle back to see if we're able to get Jewel LaComb. Mr. LaComb, it appears that your line is open. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
And you're all set, too.
I just wanted to say that if you have a control for the master volume on this, you need to turn it up. At the beginning of the meeting, I could hear everything clearly. I've read many comments on the Facebook post that people can't hardly hear. And the other point that I'd like to make is that I think it's important for us to see the counselors that are at the meeting and the officials that are at the meeting. This bouncing from one active speaker to another just doesn't do it. That's all I wanted to say.
At this time, Mayor, I do not see any other hands raised. I apologize. A hand has just gone up. This individual is registered and has disappeared. Give me a moment to see if I can locate, because I do remember the name. It does not appear that that individual has their hand raised any longer. It appears they did put their hand down.
Oh, okay. Yes?
I apologize for interrupting, but I do believe that this individual is having difficulty with the raise hand feature. It did just pop up again. If it's okay with you, I would like to just unmute that person and see if they did wish to address counsel. And if not, then we'll be fine. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Individual whose hand is raising is registered as Jeremiah Havens. And I've unmuted you, Mr. Havens. If you wish to address counsel, it looks like your line is open.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir, but it's very faint.
Okay. Well, I'll try to speak up then. I kind of wanted to piggyback off Jewel LaComb's comments. I've logged into this thing twice tonight. First time I couldn't get volume and no pictures whatsoever. The second time I get in, I've got volume, but no pictures whatsoever of anybody there. I did notice when I was first on here that the Assistant City Manager was on, was there. I'm just, I'm just curious how come she is allowed there, but you wouldn't allow Sarah Purdy there? But I think, you know, we've done this enough now. I think you ought to get this thing straightened around here. During your election, you talked about cameras and publicizing all these meetings and everything. And this, this is, I mean, I know you're trying your best, Kathy, but this is, this is turning out to be a kind of a joke to me. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I do have a few more individuals, Mayor. The next person is registered as Deborah Montgomery. And I will unmute that person now. It appears your line is open.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, I would just like to understand how, if the three counselors requested the lawyer to be there, why isn't she? Nobody really answered that question. I would really like an answer. Thank you.
I believe it's up, one of the other four counselors can simply make the same request and then there's a consensus. The lawyer feels that four counselors are needed to ask for his presence for some reason. I don't know.
That is correct, Dan. And emails back and forth with the attorney. Unfortunately, had, that had to be done at our behest due to the fact that we weren't getting anywhere else. With the city attorney did stipulate and state that without majority consent of counsel, would he, would he be present at a meeting? That email was shared amongst all on counsel.
So apparently the citizens don't have any say at all.
Apparently not. We're trying.
Wow, it's good to know. Have a good night, guys.
You too, Debbie.
Next individual is registered as Ann Irwin. And I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Ann Irwin, it appears you are self-muted. With your permission, Mayor, can I move on and then circle back?
Yes.
Thank you. The next individual is registered as Heather Shaver. And I will unmute that individual now. It appears as though your onrare is all set.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just want to say, you know, I've been on the last, what, four meetings that we've had or that you guys have had. And it, it really disturbs me that, you know, we live in a democracy and this is a dictatorship. It's not a democracy. There is no, nobody working together. And nobody's working for the people. I mean, I'm all for change and I'm all for saving tax, tax money. But, you know, this is not normal. And the negative publicity that we had over the month makes us look like we're from Mayberry. And it's actually sad and disgusting. And that's all I have. Well, and I, you know, I, I'm really curious as to why a lot of questions are not being answered. You know, there's, 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 there's people that are asking questions. David Price asked questions. Questions aren't being answered. Why? That's all I have to say.
The next individual is registered as McRoberts. And I will unmute that person now. It appears your mic is open.
Yeah, this is Scott McRoberts. And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the city attorney, why they are not present right now, I would like to ask directly to Mayor Skelly how you can spend $7,000 of the city taxpayer money in closed-door meetings about sales tax. And yet, when majority of the public wants that city attorney present, the four of you can just say, "No, we're voting it down." Give me a good reason for that, Mayor Skelly. Don't sit there and look at me. Let's hear what, let's hear the reasoning. That's what I thought.
Scott, as far as the money spent, I went, Dan was there, St. Lawrence County, wanted to take $11 million.
I know all about that, Mike, but you, the bill only showed about $500 surrounding sales tax.
Do you want me to answer or not, Scott?
I want it to be the truth, though. The bill from the attorney did not show.
I think Dan can, Dan can vouch for the $11 million. Thank you, Scott, if you don't want me to answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That's what I thought I'd get out of you.
The next individual is registered as Dana Gray. And I'm going to unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted, Dana Gray.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so my question to you guys is, who were you voted in by? Mike Skelly, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Dillabaw, Mr. Reach, Mr. Powers, Ms. Kennedy, Mr. Scamperly, who were you voted in by? I have sat here night after night after night, listening to your people tell you what they want. And you four, you know who you are, do not give a single care of what they want. You do what you want. You don't vote for the people. You vote for what you want. You people need to stop and think about who elected you and who you're supposed to represent. It's not about what you want. It's about what the city wants. When three counselors are saying, "We want the lawyer, we want the lawyer, we want the lawyer," why is it such a big deal? Because you four already have your mind made up. You guys need to pull it together and get together as a council and figure it out, because you are making yourselves look foolish. That's it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
The next individual is registered as Ryan Farrell. And I will unmute Mr. Farrell now. It appears you are self-muted, sir. And it appears you are all set.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I, I guess I just have a question on the city attorney. I, just going back to about a month ago on the meeting, I believe it was stated by, I think, Mayor Skelly that only three council members could meet with the city attorney at one time. Is that correct?
About a quorum, yes, that would be correct.
Okay, so he only needs, he can only meet with three people at once. Yet you need a majority of four to get him onto this open forum? Why would that be?
Good question.
Okay, that was my, that wasn't the reason I was raising my hand originally. The other question is, if we were to appoint an acting fire chief for the city and not fill that position on the back end, do we have an actual dollar amount on the total that would, it would cost us or save us? Is there an actual dollar amount on what it would cost to fill that position and not fill Officer Mack or whoever would be the new chief?
Yes.
What would that new dollar amount be, sir?
So your question is, let me see if I'm looking at this right. Estimated monthly cost, okay. Without the fire chief, without the acting fire chief, the estimated monthly cost is $4,298.40 a month.
Okay.
With an acting fire chief, the cost is only $955 a month.
So I understand, I understand we're asking them to help out, but why would it make any sense to continue along that same path route?
So with the acting fire chief, the change is about $3,500 a month.
Right. Almost seems like, what's that, sorry?
About $12,000 annually.
$12,000 more?
Oh, more than that.
Okay, well, thanks for your time. At least I got some answers.
Thank you.
The next individual is registered as T.P. And I'm going to unmute that individual now. It appears the line is open. Hello, T.P.? Mayor, it appears the line is open. Line is working. I'm not sure if that individual is experiencing technical difficulty. I do not see any other individuals with their hand raised at this point, Mayor.
I don't have a raise hand button, so I just unmuted myself. I have one more thing to add. Mayor Skelly asked me what the, why the fire department doesn't want to give. Back in November, we gave insurance to the tune of about $160,000 savings this year. Also gave up four positions through attrition. Not because we wanted to, but because we felt it was going to be a financial gain to the city. That is what we gave. We've only lost two positions at the tune of about $200,000. So if you want to do the quick math, that's well over $300,000 we saved the city this year. That is what we gave. We are not asking for a whole lot. Just some leadership. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Um, are there any more?
The next individual, Mayor, this person is registered as Colleen Ashley Mayette. And I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Yes, can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening. On day one, four of these gentlemen sitting wherever they may be tonight made promises to the citizens of Augsburg to gain vote. You four, it mustn't agenda to clean the swamp and have continued to meet your objective to remove every department head you had conflict with. It's disturbing. It's disgusting. It's morally and ethically wrong. It's not the game of Survivor to out-win, out-play, I'm out-smart. As a taxpayer, I want the city present. Where do, where do we get to vote? You know, if you don't have our interest, then maybe you should step down or at least act like you have our interest, because it's, it's not looking like you do. Thank you.
The next individual we'll circle back to is registered with the initials T. like Tom, P. like Peter. And I'm going to unmute that individual again now. It appears the line is open. It appears the line is open. Unfortunately, Mayor, it appears this individual is having technical difficulty.
Is there anyone else to?
The next individual is registered as Deborah Montgomery, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears the line is self-muted. Okay. And here's the line is open.
I'm sorry, I might be kind of stupid when it comes to politics, but I have a question. If the citizens are asking for the attorney to be there, how come one of you four won't step up and vote to have them there? Just curious. Okay, I'm not going to get an answer to that either. I'm sorry, I am so totally unbelieved by this council. I can't stand it. My father was a counselor when I was a kid, and government was government, and we looked up to our counselors. Can I tell you something? I just sit here and shake my head. I can't comprehend that. It's like, why are you not listening to the people of Augsburg? I don't understand that. No, no, nothing to say. Wow. Okay, good night.
Thanks, Deb.
I'm blown away. I just don't get it.
Just a moment, Mayor, I'm not sure whenever she disappeared to, but her line is not muted, and I'm trying to locate her now.
The next individual is registered as Jennifer Stevenson, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears the line is open.
Good evening. Anytime you sit on a body that has to make decisions for citizens, it's difficult, especially when there are tough economic times. The difference here is that in the past, when we had hard decisions to make as a council, we had open discussion and debate, sometimes very heated debates, but we discussed it in public, it was heard by the citizens if they chose to attend and listen, and it was out there for everyone to hear why a decision was made. What I find disturbing here is the fact that, when I watch the meetings, and I've watched the majority of them since January, decisions have already been made. So it leads me to ask, where were these decisions made and based on what? And I think that even if you stuck by what you want to do, if you just had open debate and open discussion about them, it might be easier for those of us that don't understand and don't agree with you to at least reason with it and come to understand it. And I don't understand why an attorney, our attorney for the city, with all of the issues that are going on, would not be invited to an executive session if it is confidential information that needs to be discussed, or if it's something that is not under executive session material, why they couldn't come and address us. Obviously, the bill is quite substantial regardless of what you have been discussing and who has been making that determination. It still would behoove everyone for open government and transparency to have them at least come and appear at a city council meeting. Remember, there is no travel time for them, it is merely popping on for 15 or 20 minutes of billable time. This is not a drive from Canton or Lisbon, this is just popping on for a minimal billing time. So I ask you to please reconsider that, and please, in the future when you make these decisions, don't just make it because you can and you have four votes, but explain to the voters why. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
The next individual is registered as Don Murs, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are all set.
I just have a question, and I apologize for trying to listen to talking, and some of levels are low and high, but in relation to the fire chief issue, we had to do 15 billable hours with our attorney. At say, 15 hours a month, that equates to about $3,750. And if I heard right, our potential savings on the fire chief per month by not enacting that are about $4,200. So, wouldn't it behoove us mathematically, and perhaps I heard wrong, so I apologize, because it's been terribly difficult to listen to parts tonight just because of the unequal volume, would we not be in a better stead if we actually researched this and, and got that information and paid a smaller fee, then got into perhaps a legal battle later if we're debating over the contract and the charter and all the other issues at hand?
Yep, agree.
The next individual is registered as Don McCarthy, and I will unmute you now, Mr. McCarthy, you're all set. Mr. McCarthy, can you hear us? Here's that he is experiencing some technical difficulty. I'll move on to the next and circle back. The next individual is registered as Doug Loffler, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
Can you hear me?
It appears the line is open. Yes, sir, we can.
Trying to be very objective here, everything here, folks, but, you know, I'll, I'll go back to, to the, my question originally, and on the city attorneys. You guys are smart enough. You guys are smart enough. You know, you know what's going on here, all right? And, you know, I worked, I worked with some of you guys that are sitting on this newly-elected council. All right? I served where you guys served. I know how difficult decisions are, but you know what? One thing I can hold my head on, I was honest with the public. Okay? And, you know, for you guys to sit back and not answer the question, why you do not want the city attorney there, it's really, really baffled me. And, you know, it, it's, 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 it's not fair to the people that are paying the taxes. You guys saying, well, the people want taxes cut, yes, everybody wants taxes cut, all right? But what, what about everybody? I, I just don't think it's right, I don't think it's ethical for you guys to sit there and not one of you is giving answers, okay, why the city attorney's not there. You guys are all smart individuals. You would think, you would want that city attorney there. And, 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 you know, it, it, it's just unbelievable. And I think, you know, there again, I go back and I just, I just happened to get a couple things from a couple local attorney firms after the first question, and, and their local attorney firms were not asked about a quote about being a city attorney. So, you know, something's, something's got to level here, boys. You, you, you just protect yourself, protect each and every one of you sitting there. I think we beat that horse to death, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual is registered as Carolyn McPherson, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears the line is open.
Yes, Mayor Skelly, my question to you is, will you ask the lawyer to be there next meeting, yes or no?
I'm not sure. I'd have to see what's on agenda.
Mr. or Counselor Fisher, yes or no?
If I feel it's necessary. I didn't feel it necessary.
But the citizens are asking for it. Are you going to support them?
This is a presentation, this is a personal appearance, which means, personal appearance means that people get to speak so that we can hear as many people. It's not a question-and-answer person or a debate.
I think as citizens, we should be able to ask questions and that.
I'm sorry, but the clerk didn't verify to you at the beginning on what the rules of engagement are in a council meeting. These will, we are going to move on.
Of course you are. Yes, cricket, that's all we get with you guys. What are you going to do about City Rec this summer? What's your plan? When are you going to put out the plan for, for City Rec?
It will, it really will depend on what New York State allows us to do.
Typical answers, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
The next individual is registered as Don McCarthy, and I will unmute that individual now. Mr. McCarthy, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can, sir.
Okay. I mean, I was the acting chief in February, March, and April, when I was paid approximately $950 a month to be out-of-title chief. I, I worked eight to four, but I was still the out-of-title chief from four at night until the next morning. I was available to be called for anything during those hours. On May 1st, I ceased being the acting fire chief, and I gave the numbers to the city manager of how much it was going to cost if we didn't have one individual in charge as the fire chief. And whether it's an assistant chief or a captain makes no difference. Anybody can be, an officer can be appointed the acting fire chief, but when there is no fire chief, you're right, it falls back on the assistant chiefs. So we have four assistant chiefs that, as of right now, whoever is scheduled to work is the acting chief. Mr. Rickett did not mention that the union did have an agreement with the city manager that until the next regular council meeting, we would waive out-of-title pay on nights and weekends, because we realized that it would cost four times as much to have acting assistant chiefs be the, or the assistant chiefs be the acting chief, and that would not be a good financial, a good financial move. So we wanted to give her time to explain that to the counselors and then bring it up at the next scheduled meeting. So we did agree to waive out-of-title pay. So right now, we are not costing $4,000 a month. It's actually less than $900 a month, because when an assistant chief is off, he's not getting out-of-title pay. So we've been trying to run it with the assistant chiefs right now, and it does not work, having four assistant chiefs in charge. When we have a fire at night, the fire chief is notified. So we have to figure who's the scheduled assistant chief who may not be on duty, you know, is that person supposed to respond to the fire? Is he the one that's going to, you know, give out the press release? Having four different people in charge of the fire department, if you don't know who's in charge unless you have a schedule book in front of you to see which assistant chief is supposed to be working. We've tried it. We've tried it for three weeks with four different people running it, and things get missed. It, it's, it's not, you know, if we had to do it short-term, if we had to do it for a couple days while the chief's gone, yes, it, it can be taken care of that way, because if the chief's gone, he's still in charge, we can get ahold of him, but we run the fires when he's not available. To do it 24/7 for any length of time, we've done it for three weeks, and for three weeks, it has been a, not, not a good situation at the fire department. So if your idea is to have the structure fall apart at the fire department, then keep doing it the way that you are, because it is getting bad. Without having a single person in charge that can lay out what needs to be done, then nothing gets laid out. So it's, it, it's not working the way it is, and I plead with you guys to, to put somebody in charge. We need a, a single person in charge of the fire department in it, and it would not cost more money. But this is the first regular council meeting, so the agreement that was made with the union, with the city manager to not, or to waive out-of-title pay, is going to end after this meeting. So to say, well, can't you help us out and not charge us out-of-title pay? If I wanted to do that, I could do that, and then the union's going to, could bring me up on charges. We have a contract that we have to follow. We've done what we can to get you to this point, to show you that there is no cost savings to not have a chief. So we would like you to, uh, to fill that position, and it, it makes fiscal sense to fill the position. And that's all that I have to say.
Thank you, Don, and, and thanks for, you know, that, that savings.
The next individual with a hand raise is registered as David Price, and I will unmute that individual now. Here's, the line is open.
Hey, counselors, I would ask a, a few questions. I know that you're not answering questions because that is your prerogative. I would ask, go back to the fact that the, there are two counselors who are not represented by video on this, on this teleconference. I would like to know their location, and they identify where they're located. Are they located within where, where citizens can reach them as is guaranteed by the Freedom of Information Act and the open government's law? Also, I would also ask that the executive session that you, that you're planning, does it, does it ask for confidentiality, or can it be an open executive session? And the most important question I want to ask is, since you, I, I would disagree with Doug Longford in a sense, we beat the horse to death about the presence of the city attorney, not because I disrespect Doug, but because we, we really need an answer to this. The city attorney should be present at this meeting, because this council has made a change to the council procedure where you require whoever originates a resolution to propose the resolution. The city attorney has a, has proposed the resolution to ask for a, a, a separate investigation. So shouldn't that attorney be present, present that resolution as you've asked every other entity to present when they originate a resolution? Those are questions that you won't answer, because I know the answers will be confusing, but ultimately, those are answers that should be on the records.
Yes, yep. Yep. I asked them, I said, because they refused to bring the attorney in, and everybody's been getting on there telling them, why are you not?
The next individual is registered as Brian Mitchell, and I will unmute that individual.
When I said, yes or no, are you going to invite the attorney? He sat there silent, then said, well, it depends. I said, yep, figures, okay.
Is it just not committed? I think you got somebody else still going.
No, sir. It appears that someone has been self-not muted. I believe you're okay now, Mr. Mitchell, I believe I fixed the issue.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just one last comment. Uh, you know, I had the pleasure of serving on council with Dan, and one of the first things he said to me when I was on council, he said, you know, welcome, this is politics. We might not agree at the table, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, we're friends. You know, and I think the four of you got voted in because you're well-liked and respected, and that's a great thing. And, you know, looking at it, I'm friends with three out of four of you on Facebook. The other person I was a friend with, and he blocked me. So he, he couldn't separate the politics and something personal. Um, the question here about the attorney, you know, one of my favorite quotes, I love quotes, come up from the mayor. He's a real attorney, he gets the job done, Dan, to be exact. If he gets the job done, Mr. Mayor, bring him, get the job over with. We've sat here now for weeks with the same question, where is the attorney? He's your buddy, he's a real attorney, he gets the job done. Bring him on here and get it over with. My one other thing is, Mr. Reach said, he quoted himself as saying, only the campaign promise was for two, to take the pay on council. October 26, 2019, John Reach with Steve Fisher and Bill Dillabaw. Here is all the platform. We started our campaign back on August 12th with our first campaign rally. Here is a summary form, I won't read it all, but on here, no payer, no pay for mayor and council. So he said, he corrected himself, but obviously, that's not what was posted on Facebook. So on that, there's a mistake somewhere. Going back to the attorney, it's been over and over and over, and I'd just like to leave you with this, he's a real attorney, get the job done, let's get it done. Get him on here and get it over with. Thank you.
At this time, Mayor, there does not be, appear to be any additional people with their hands, right?
So do we have any correspondence?
We do, sir. We have three correspondence, and I'll read those now. Mayor and Council, this email letter respects a matter which I request be considered by the City Council and the City Attorney Scott Golding at the meeting to be held online on Monday, May 11, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. I have previously written to the city attorney about this matter, and he has indicated to me that he asked to have my request considered and acted upon at the May 11, 2020 meeting. This request is with respect to two parcels of property in Augsburg, which the city bid in at the 2019 tax sale, rather than allow a private investor to bid on them. The first parcel is tax map number 48.063-2-2 in the name of Cybron New York Corporation. And the second parcel is tax map number 48.071-2-1 in the name of MCYC LLC. In negotiations between myself and Mr. Mitchell Katz, representing the estate of Seymour Bronstein's deceased, it was agreed that the estate would transfer the first parcel to me, and I would convey it to MCYC LLC. To achieve that, it was necessary to have the administrative of the estate of S. Bronstein appointed ancillary administrative of the Bronstein estate in New York to sign the deed. However, the courts are now closed due to the COVID-19 pandemic, so that may not be possible prior to the tax sale on June 25, 2020. We are agreeable to pay the full amount of tax, but would prefer to have the city assign its tax sale certificate to me so we can get a new deed from the city and clear any defects in title. We would also do the same with the second parcel. The city will be paid in full for 2019 taxes, and we will be able to obtain from the city two new tax sale deeds. And we will still receive the deed from the ancillary administrator whenever the courts open. There is no disadvantage to the city as it will receive the full amount due, but we will be able to conclude the agreement in the event the courts are not open until after the July 25 tax sale. If the city had sold the two parcels at tax sale to the public, we could have taken an assignment from the individual who held the tax certificates and done the same. That would have been the normal course of events. We request that the city assign its two tax certificates for the two named parcels to me on receipt of payment of the 2019 taxes before May 30, 2020. We will then submit the two assigned tax certificates to the city for a new tax deed to each parcel after June 25, 2020, and the city will issue two new deeds to me. I should mention that Dr. G. Lee Hyce and I are owners of MCYC LLC, but we are agreeing to promote Dr. Bronstein's daughter, Diana Nittle, to benefit from Dr. Bronstein's former ownership in the first parcel. If you have any questions, please call me at 315-323-1905. We would anticipate, we would appreciate affirmative action by the city on this request, which is required only because of disruption of the court system by the coronavirus pandemic. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Valentin Clements, Esquire, Morristown, New York. Next letter, Mayor and Council, a few weeks ago, I posted an open letter to the council and mayor on Facebook, which I also sent to northcountrynow.com. It was scheduled to be read at the last city council meeting, but for some reason, public comments were not allowed. Although things have quieted down since the past couple resolutions were approved by council, my feelings have not changed. I feel that the majority on the council is on a scary power trip and feel that they can pass any resolution that they please simply because they have the majority. This is obvious. Not consulting with the minority, or should I say, without consulting with the full council, is not the proper way to govern. I know that most of you are new to politics, which I am not faulting you for, but you should not be conducting city business with only a select few of you being fully involved, especially the most inexperienced. It seems that someone or some people from council had contact with the city attorney regarding the validity of recent resolutions passed that were considered by some to be charter violations. Although it was the attorney's opinion that the resolution did not violate the charter, other people have their own opinions as well, opinions that contradict what the city attorney feels. Augsburg has a city manager in form of government, and the city manager should not be restricted in performing her duties because a few newly elected officials want to micromanage. A few newly elected officials that do not know the background or understand the city manager's knowledge of what running a city entails. To get to my point, the majority ordered the city manager to lay off several employees in specific areas of specific departments. Although you did not give her the names of the affected individuals, you might as well have. You knew who they were, but by not naming them, you felt as if you had adhered to the charter. It is my opinion, and I am not alone, that you did violate the charter. You then placed the city manager on administrative leave. Your reason was because she did not follow through with your directives to enact these layoffs. The problem with that is that your deadline had not even arrived yet, and some of the layoffs could not meet your deadline as per civil service law. Some council members have openly admitted that they wanted to get rid of her sooner. Your resolution should have either been null and void because the deadline had not passed yet, or you should have scheduled the meeting after the deadline had passed. Four of you are running a shot through the city and is not running well with the vast number of citizens in this community. The community is divided right now, and it has more to do with the way that the majority is going about doing business and not so much as the outcome of their actions itself. I know that you have your supporters, and I truly understand that tough decisions need to be made, but they need to be made in a more professional manner. As I stated before, if you are looking to cut expenses, what the city manager and department has to decide what positions can be lost. If you worked with people, including all of the council members, this community would be in so much better shape. I know that the majority have not been pleased with the city manager, and they are glad to see her leave, but I believe that he was very competent and contrary to what you think. I believe that he has the city heading in the right direction. Now, we don't have a city manager, or a recreation director, or a police chief, or a fire chief, but everything is good. Step back and look at how your actions have affected this city, its citizens and employees. Start acting like leaders and lead by example. Start working in the best interest of all of the citizens of Augsburg. Sincerely, James J. McCarthy. Our last letter, dear Augsburg City Council, integrity is a quality that should be exemplified by all men and women granted the privilege to be chosen as a leader. Integrity is defined as performance adherence to a moral and legal code. This is why counselors are awarded the title, the honorable, and the mayor is called your honor. Because to lead with integrity is honorable. However, recent council meetings have demonstrated that integrity is sorely lacking in select members of this council. Mayor Skelly and counselors Reese, Fisher, and Dillabaugh have given the citizens of this city specific justification for their forfeiture of office. During the special meeting which took place on May 6, these four council members did willingly and knowingly violate the Augsburg City Charter. They were notified on several occasions that the terms of the resolution that was under consideration and the only actionable item on the agenda violated the charter. They ignored the facts. They ignored the pleas of every citizen in attendance. They ignored their fellow counselors' suggestions to seek legal advice, and they ignored their oath of office. There was no integrity in those decisions. Specifically stated, in Augsburg Municipal Code, the Charter, Section C9, titled Limitations, Paragraph D, Appointments and Removals, neither the city council nor any of its members, including the mayor, shall in any manner dictate the appointment or removal of any city administrative officers or employees whom the city manager or any of his subordinates are empowered to appoint. Resolution introduced by Mayor Skelly, then amended by Counselor Fisher, and receiving affirmative vote from Mayor Skelly, Counselors Reese, Fisher, and Dillabaugh, directed the city manager to conduct layoffs and eliminate positions, including a city department head and city employee. Specifically, four layoffs in the police department effective May 15, and to lay off two administrative positions in the recreation department effective May 15, and to eliminate one housing inspector position effective May 15. The definition of direct in this context is to control the operations of or to manage. Those are specific functions of the city manager under Section C19 of the city charter. The actions by these counselors are in direct contrast to the language of the city charter. Therefore, all four mentioned members of council violated the terms of the city charter. Further, since Mayor Skelly, along with Counselors Reese, Fisher, and Dillabaugh violated the terms of the city charter, they are subject to the terms of Section C10, titled Vacancies, Forfeiture of Office, Paragraph D, Number Two, specifically forfeiture of office. If the counselor or the mayor shall forfeit the office to any express prohibitions of this charter as set forth in C9 are violated. Therefore, I am calling for Mayor Skelly and Counselors Reese, Fisher, and Dillabaugh to forfeit their office in accordance with the Augsburg City Charter as enumerated above. If they refuse to do so, I'm asking the city manager, city attorney, Counselor Powers, Kennedy, and Scamperly to conduct an investigation of these charges under Section C11 and C14. Further, upon a finding of guilt, I also ask that council impose a fine on those found guilty to cover any costs associated with the investigation to relieve the taxpayers of this burden. I am aware of the gravity and weight of this decision. That's why integrity is so important in leadership. Thank you. David J. Hyce. That's all, Your Honor, for correspondence.
Okay, so this brings us to consent agenda. That the claims has enumerated in general fund warrant number 09-2020, the amount of $388,286.32, and library warrant number 09-2020, and the amount of $22,375.69, and capital fund warrant number 09-2020, and the amount of $120,706, and community development warrant number 09-2020, and the amount of $0, and community renewal fund warrant number 09-2020, and the amount of $0, as audited, and same hereby order paid. I so move. But the city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Skelly?
No discussion with the warrant?
Do you want a discussion? Yes.
I just got a quick question. Is the city attorney bill for the month of April included in this tax warrant?
I don't have it. Anything else? City clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
We, we have no appointments tonight, and that brings us to items for council action.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. We retire to executive session. Under Section 105, subdivision one of the public officers lost, C and D.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
And with the motion, the only presence we need is a counsel.
Can you cite, can you cite for me, Steve, C and D, that you're basing this off?
Yes, I can. Information regarding current or future litigation or prosecutions of a criminal offense which could in parallel impact law enforcement or disclosed, discuss proposal pending or current litigation. Anything else?
No, I, you know, I, again, I still question why the attorney isn't present for this meeting, and more importantly, executive session when it has to deal with a member of, you know, apparently through executive session, it's the employment history of a person. We need to make sure that what transpires out of that is legal and just within the contracts, potentially civil service law.
We were not even reaching that one yet. We'll go back again.
This is a different one than the executive session that's on?
Yes.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
I don't understand what's going on here.
Counselor Powers? I'm sorry, sir. I couldn't hear you. Yes, sir. Your vote will go to executive session. Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
I'm sorry, sir.
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
I have one quick comment here. Seeing that we're going off the agenda, we're going to, well, you know, forget it. You'll get four to three anyway. Forget it.
Counselor Kennedy? Counselor Kennedy?
No.
The motion is defeated, sir.
What's that?
The motion is defeated, sir.
Can you do a recount? I'm not, I'm not.
Can't hear you.
Can you check through again?
Yes, sir. I can. The vote is four to three. In accordance with the administrative regulations, Section 17, E5.3, any action brought from the floor requires two-thirds of all council to be approved and actionable immediately. Otherwise, it is put forward to the next council meeting.
That's correct, but it's, it's not, there's not going to be action. There won't be a vote. So it is, it is permissible on a four to three.
I don't, I don't, I disagree. I wish we had the attorney here.
Well, then you should read the charter.
I've read it. I disagree.
If council wishes to move forward, I can stop the executive session up if someone would like to direct me to do so.
Yes, Kathy.
Okay, so you have your dial-in instructions for the originally scheduled executive session. I'm going to leave the session open, and I will go to activate that for you now, verify that you're all there, and then we will come back and wait for you to return.
Yeah, let's see.
Can you hear me now?
Counselor Scamperly, yes, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Counselor Kennedy, yes, we can hear you. Counselor Powers?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Scally, it appears that you're here and your audio is working. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and I can hear you too, thank you. Counselor Reese, it appears that your audio is working. Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. And let me see, Counselor Fisher, it appears that you are here, but you're self muted.
I'm muted.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Dillabod, it appears you are also here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, and we can hear you.
Mayor, as a point of order? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say it appears that all members of council are present.
As a point of order, I know somebody from the public did ask where we were so that we don't violate open meetings law. And I'd like to state my current position at 814 Mansion Avenue, my home residence. So, and I invite every counselor here to do the same.
404 Rensseler Avenue, my house in Augsburg, Nicole Kennedy.
625 Elizabeth Street.
I'm in right now.
This is Bill Dillabod, 211 David Street.
812 Franklin.
07 Jersey.
Okay, so, our first item for business is a resolution accepting the FRB recommendations for authorizing the city comptroller to sign agreements with Fleet Enterprise or Enterprise Fleet Management, which was tabled on April 27th, 2020, city council meeting. Does any counselor wish to make a motion to take this off the table?
I'll move it.
Back again.
Discussion?
I'm gonna vote no to untable it. I'm all for understanding is better, and I'm all for...
I can't have.
Oh, you can't?
No.
So, you know, I'm all for, I wish that the assistant manager had discussed it with us ahead of time. I mean, it was tabled for a reason, and that's, you know, I'm looking for more information just to understand, you know, how many vehicles we have at each department, how old they are, how many miles are on them, things like that. You know, and also, you know, I'm not comfortable that it didn't go out to bid to more than one entity. That's never a situation, so yeah, I'll just vote to, I'm gonna vote no on untabling it.
Any further discussion?
So John, what do you know, you don't want to vote on it at all then?
No.
A voting no.
I just shouldn't leave it tabled.
Listen, I'm in the car business, and I know for a fact in this area, Enterprise is about the only one that does this around this area. So I just let you know that, so.
Yeah, I believe it's recommended by the restructuring finance, or the program that came through. And you can see from any of the other entities around the state, counties, and villages that support this. And, you know, and to piggyback Counselor Dillabod, and I'm not, I can't speak on behalf of his trade. But all that aside, you know, that's the word that you get when you reach out to Oneida in Portland, and I think Leana might be another that have utilized it, that are in similar situations such as Augsburg.
Yeah, I personally, the guys at St. Lawrence County, and they, they like it. And John, I wouldn't mind getting a little more information on it, but you, can you, want table for another two weeks or what?
Yeah, I'd like a presentation from staff and some more information about how many vehicles we have and the age and addition of them. You know, just, I think two new police vehicles were purchased. What happens to those? You know, I'm just trying to understand the whole thing better, and I'm not...
Well, we'll keep them for five to seven years, and then, listen, I like, I love leasing, I go, I think it's a good idea, but...
Any further discussion?
This has been discussed for months and months and months and months. I mean, it's a money saver, it's, we're piggybacking off of the lowest rate. It's, it's, it's cut and dry. I'm gonna vote it off the table and vote on it. New equipment, maintenance, it's gonna be maintained, it's new equipment. Cost savings are there.
Um, they don't...
Like Dan said, it was discussed at the previous council, I believe you guys were actually in the chamber the day it was first brought up, and, 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 you know, here we are, you want more information, well. I don't get it. I'm an affirmative, I'll support it.
Okay, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Reese?
Uh, no.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Attorney Douglas?
I'm sorry, who?
Mayor Scally?
Um, I'm gonna vote yes.
Counselor Dillabod?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, so, it's off the table, we're gonna have some discussion on voting for it. I would say that because it is in the state recommendations, I'm gonna vote for it, and that I wish counselors are, would be supportive of other recommendations, difficult recommendations that went through by the council and last year and not followed up on. I mean, the land bank was pretty easy to take some money, this is easy to take some money. I hope that the three previous counselors can, you know, make some, some of the harder decisions in that state recommendations. Any further discussion?
We just, what are you discussing?
Are we going to bring a motion to vote on this now?
I'm motion to vote on this.
I'll second.
Okay, and does anyone have anything more to say, or you want to go to the vote?
What are we voting on here?
We're voting on to sign the resolution accepting, signing with the enterprise in the agreement.
No, I would just like to say that another point I wanted to make was that this was put together a long time ago. And since then, as you know, since the pandemic, prices are changing drastically. And I just, I just can't support it. I'd rather it go out to bid and we get competitive bids and quotes, and maybe we could do better, and I would like to understand our, our fleet as it is and how many vehicles we actually do need. So, I'm gonna vote no.
Thank you, John. Kathy, would you please call the roll on the resolution to accept the agreement with the enterprise?
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
I'm sorry, me?
Yes, Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabod?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Sure, yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
No.
Approved.
Uh, our next item for business will be read by Assistant City Manager Andrea Smith.
It appears that Andrea is self muted. Andrea, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, a resolution to extend the airport security agreement with Bridge and Port Authority for one month. Whereas the current agreement between the City of Augsburg and the Bridge, Augsburg Bridge and Port Authority for the provision of airport security services by the City of Augsburg Police Department expires on May 31st, 2020. And whereas the City of Augsburg and the Augsburg Bridge and Port Authority desire to continue these services for an additional month, now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council hereby authorizes the extension of the current agreement for an additional month to expire on June 30th, 2020. And be it further resolved that the terms of the current agreement will continue unaltered during this timeframe. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be given to the Augsburg Bridge and Port Authority.
All right, so move.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
I want to know if the Augsburg Bridge and Port Authority owes the city any money currently on this agreement.
They made a...
Yes, but...
I'm sorry, they did make a payment today that brought them to a zero balance.
Okay. Um, with that, have we any assurances from the Bridge and Port Authority? Maybe even Counsel Reese can answer this regarding any, I mean, we're looking from the New York State governmental operations and the executive branch of government, without a federal stimulus package from the federal government, the state's looking at upwards of a $65 billion deficit. I know that there's current legislation out there that is looking to de-cap authorities such as the Bridge and Port Authority and multiple authorities throughout the state of New York, mainly many of them on the Long Island branch of authorities. And I'm not saying that I'm in favor of that, quite frankly, I'm not, because good authorities do good work. But all that aside, have we any assurances from the executive branch that the Bridge and Port Authority in this potential deficit of $60 billion, and hopefully, God willing, not more, or significantly less with a federal stimulus package? Do we have any assurances that the Bridge and Port Authority will have funding coming in to maintain operations and keep things moving?
It's, it's one month. I'm sure they're gonna have for one month, this resolution's one month, so I'm sure they'll have it for that.
So is, with that zero balance, is that paid month of May, or is that just up until April, Andrea?
That covers expenses through April, we will be doing a billing this week.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I got a question. Is the Bridge and Port Authority trying to find their own security avenue right now? Or they plan on using the police? And maybe the police chief can answer it, or somebody else, or Andrea, I'm not sure.
I don't have that answer for you, counselor. I can, I can look into that and get back to you. I know that they have looked at other options, and the city right now is their best option. Again, this agreement, as the mayor mentioned, is for one month. So they may very well be looking at other long-term options. I can't speak to the certainty of that.
So they put the...
Go ahead, sorry.
What are the payment terms? Because last that I looked, they were over 100 before they paid this morning. They were over 140 days that since they were past payment, we were waiting on payment from last October. Um, so would it be possible, would it be possible, instead of going with this unchanged, to limit the terms that they have to repay it so we can get the money quicker? Because it seems like we're floating an awful lot of money through Bridge and Ports.
Can I speak now? It, it, Bridge and Port is a good partner for the city, and if they got a zero balance, I don't know why we're talking about what was owed, because it was paid. It, it just seems like you don't, do you not want the airport?
I'm not against the airport, I'm against, if I didn't pay my bills for an extended period of time, I wouldn't continue to have things. That's all I'm saying.
They, until they pay, they were behind three months.
It's a new point, they've paid.
It's not a new point, it's the same premise of Counsel Reese's, oh, no on the enterprise deal. It's the same fiscal idea.
It's not.
You were good with enterprise, and you're not good with the airport. The airport is really important to our region.
I'm not saying I'm not good with the airport. I don't want to see the airport lose revenue.
At this point, if they, if they're paid 100%, what?
Don't put words in our mouths. Nobody said that. We're asking pertinent questions on behalf of the taxpayers.
That was okay.
Um, any further discussion?
So is it not an option at all to alter the terms so that they have to pay quicker? Just so that if it's only for a month, can we do a 30-day terms on it? So we get our money in the bank quicker, a guarantee of payment quicker?
So we get our money in the bank quicker, a guarantee of payment quicker?
That would have to be in a future resolution. This, this one's
I move to amend this resolution to include Council Kennedy's language.
I'll second it.
Now we just protect ourselves as the city. We don't go out so far. We get our payment in 30 days. And if they choose to go with us, we can, in future negotiations, talk about a payment return.
And quite possibly maintain a solid relationship with them going forward for long term.
Yeah, well, I don't know of any business that had, that works for the city or does any work that pays their bills on 30 days. And being in business, you would know that sometimes that doesn't happen.
We have a resolution in front of us that's not suggesting that.
So do we, so do we trash the Bridge and Port? Is that, is that what we're doing here?
I don't think anybody's trashing the Bridge and Port.
I just want a quick return on investment.
Twist him.
Let's, you're insane. You're gonna take a role then? You want to take a role on amending the resolution? Right now? Let's, Kathy, would you please call a roll?
Yes, Mayor, and so everyone's aware, this is a vote to amend. Mayor Schaller?
No.
Council Jilaba?
No.
Council Fisher?
No.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reach?
I will abstain.
Council Campbell?
Yes.
Denied.
Okay. Now can we take a roll on the original resolution?
Council Jilaba?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
No.
Council Powers?
No.
Council Reach?
I will abstain.
Council Scampersley?
No.
Mayor Schaller?
Yes.
Denied.
That was great.
So does this mean we'll have no police at the airport and the airport will not open? Is that correct?
I think there's a chance to make, amend that contract.
Okay, Dan, that's no airport. Okay, that's gonna go down in history. Okay. Our next item for business will be read by Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution introducing an ordinance and providing for public notice and public hearing with regard to the sale of city-owned property. Be it resolved that ordinance number blank of 2020 entitled "An Ordinance to Offer City-Owned Property for Sale at Public Auction" be and it hereby is introduced before the City Council of the City of Augsburg, New York. And be it further resolved that the City Council shall hold a public hearing in the matter of the adoption of the after said ordinance to be held virtually at the city, at the council chambers in the city of Augsburg, New York on the 8th day of June, 2020 at 7:00 PM. And be it further resolved that the city clerk give notice of such virtual public hearing by publication in the newspaper at least seven days before the hearing date of a notice setting forth the time and virtual place and describing the proposed ordinance in summary form. This is an ordinance to sell at public auction. Tax map parcel 48.072-7-40 at 520 Berry Street, for which the city has advertised a minimum price, purchase price of $8,000. Section two, the city does not guarantee clear, clear property title in the transfer of property by auction and conveyance will be made by quitclaim deed. The City Council reserves the right to reject any or all bids or to withdraw any parcel from sale. Section three, this ordinance shall become effective 10 days after publication.
Would a counselor like to make a motion? Do you have a second?
Yes, John Reach.
Okay, any discussion?
Let's sell property.
Would
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, would the city clerk please call the roll?
Council Fisher?
No.
Council Kennedy? Council Kennedy?
Mr. Mayor, may, may I ask for clarification?
Yes, Council Reach, I
I'm trying, so I didn't realize when I first looked at this. It is, it is a public auction. And I'm, I'm really glad to see that. That's, that's the proper way to do whatever you're disposing of public property. But just to be clear, it is, it is a public auction.
Uh, are you directing that to Andrea?
Yes.
Yeah, you're, this is Andrea, Council Reach. You are a little difficult to hear, but this is a call for a public hearing to sell the property at public auction.
Thank you.
Can we
Sure.
With that clarity, could we redo the, the, the call?
Yes, sir. Would you like me to do that now?
Yes, please do it over, please. Thank you.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reach?
Yes.
Council Scampersley?
Yes.
Mayor Schaller?
Yes.
Council Jilaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, uh, our next item for business will be read by Assistant City Manager Andrea Smith.
This was put forward by the city attorney. I think the city attorney should read it.
Well, um, okay, but Andrea Smith's reading it then. Thank you.
A resolution authorizing the Assistant City Manager to solicit proposals for the third-party investigation of alleged violations of the city's workplace violence prevention policy. Whereas multiple complaints have been filed alleging violations of the city's workplace violence prevention policy. And whereas the city's policy called for an immediate investigation of the complaint. And whereas the city attorney has recommended that the city hire an outside entity to conduct the independent investigation. Now therefore be it resolved, the Augsburg City Council hereby accepts the recommendation from the city attorney and authorizes the Assistant City Manager to solicit proposals to conduct said investigation.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Um, any further discussion?
Yeah, in my opinion, I think this is warranted. If there's nothing to be hidden, we should just get it out in the open. Let the investigation take place. If nothing transpired, then it clears anyone who's been accused of any wrongdoing. And if there was wrongdoing, then the people who filed have the right to have that known. So I think there's no harm in having this investigated. It protects everyone involved.
Any further discussion?
With, with that, I mean, it's, it's, it's a law. And that's why municipalities have workplace violence prevention programs in place. And they can be made by any employee of the, of the city. And, you know, independent party needs to be, needs to, needs to review this. And I think no vote in this is negligence regarding the workplace violence law going forward. And that's all I got.
I think it's our duty and our obligation to uphold the law. It's part of Augsburg law. It's part of state laws, part of federal law to protect your city employees. And we, we have to vote yes on this, certainly.
Any further
Well, I think, I think it's a witch hunt against a certain member of the council. And I don't think it's right. And I'm gonna vote no.
Based on what? What do you know about it?
I, I just, I'm just gonna vote no. And I just think it's a witch hunt. I got my opinion, that's all. I don't have to say it to you. I, I got an opinion. It's a witch hunt.
Any further discussion?
Well, I the complaints have been filed with the state Public Employee Safety and Health Bureau already. Obviously, there had to be some investigation done in order to file the complaints and have them send them down to the state. I have all the confidence in the state agency to, to render a decision, whether it be favorable or not. That's it.
Okay. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Council Kennedy?
Just one second, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to say that I think that, you know, the appropriate entity is the agency that they were filed with. And if they felt there was a need for investigation, I would hope that they would conduct it.
I can't hear him.
And they were also filed with the Chief of Police for investigation. I think that
Get yours at GetAllTheBrown.com.
Oh. That's it. Thank you.
I didn't hear anything you had to say.
Okay, would city clerk please call the roll?
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Reach?
No.
Council Scampersley?
Yes.
Mayor Schaller?
No.
Council Jilaba?
No.
Council Fisher?
No.
Denied.
Our, our next item for business will be read by Assistant City Manager Andrea Smith.
A resolutions, well, a resolution supporting extending the current sales tax agreement between St. Lawrence County and the city of Augsburg for one year.
I, I'm sorry, Andrea. I, I think we're on item number five for the, the fire chief.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. It got mixed with my paperclip.
I lose my place all the time too. No worries.
A resolution appointing Gerald Mack as acting fire chief. Whereas a vacancy in the position of fire chief occurred on January 21st, 2020 due to a retirement. And whereas on January 27th, 2020, this Augsburg City Council adopted a resolution addressing this vacancy through April 17th, 2020. And whereas there is a continued need to provide administrative continuity in the fire department while the fire chief's position remains vacant. Now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council hereby approves the appointment of Gerald Mack to the position of acting fire chief effective May 27th, 2020 pursuant to the following. Number one, the temporary designation of acting fire chief will not discontinue his position of captain. Number two, the acting fire chief will be compensated for out-of-title work in accordance with the terms and conditions stated in Article 12 entitled "Out-of-Title Work" for the current collective bargaining agreement between the city and the IAFF. Three, should any grievances arrive, the acting fire chief will not be required to address them in his capacity as acting fire chief. Instead, any grievances will move to step three as stated in Article 2020, 22 entitled "Grievance Procedure of the Current Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the City and the IAFF." Number four, the designation of acting fire chief will expire at midnight 90 days after the effective date unless mutually agreed to end sooner.
Any, any counselor wish to introduce this item?
Yes, I do.
A second? Just for a second?
Yes.
Okay, discussion?
Well, I think it's fiscally responsible to hire a fire chief for all the reasons that were mentioned earlier as well as here. So I'm gonna vote yes on this.
City Charter calls, City Charter calls for the position that we need to maintain and stay within the confines of the City Charter. I think true leadership exists at the top of the department heads and through the city administration and ranks in government. And I'll support it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that, yeah, yes, the Charter does call for that. But there are also, you know, there are, there are times when there are vacancies and we're trying to act, you know, uh, we will have a fire chief at some time. It's just a question of how it's handled and when the test is and all those things that need to be worked out. So I'm not in favor of this.
Is that all our discussion?
One quick question, I guess. I, I believe Mr. Rickett asked some time ago that, you know, to kind of follow up with Council Reash's questions there regarding any of the entities. On down and that, I believe, Mike, you said that you were gonna go down and meet with the fire department after that first resolution came out before its amendment to sit down and speak with them and, and has anybody done that yet to just, just to get information and, and really kind of sit down with the, the whole crew as a
I haven't made it. Have, have you, Mike?
Yes, I have.
How do, how, can you share with us?
I had a very positive meeting. There was a lot of, a lot of morale issues at that time. There was a lot of concerns going on regarding some of the decisions being made. Now, keep in mind, that was, that was when the resolution came out to cut an additional four positions, not the four that they negotiated in their collective bargaining agreement, but the, the four that your, that, that the resolution, your resolution sought in the special meeting to, to, to rack another four out of the fire department. And I did stop in and, and meet with some of the individuals and basically just spoke to them on a, on a, on a basis of a concerned citizen, not only a concerned citizen, but as a counselor and letting them know that I support their positions and, and that, that they have people on council that support them in their endeavors. And it was a, it was a good, like I said, there were some significant morale issues that, that I tried to address with them. And, and, you know, I, I can't fix morale. Morale's an issue within a, within an agency. And that, you know, that's, that's a genuine concern of mine going forward as, as I deal with it on a daily basis in my job. With that being said, yeah, I did meet with them.
Yeah, it, it definitely morale is, is hard for, for everyone with, you know, the coronavirus. I was talking with Greg Mallett and like he mentioned, since he was not replaced and now he's lost another person. So his department's 50%. It's, it's definitely hard times. It's unfortunate. You know, the police department, they actually are losing four people. I mean, the fire department, you know, they're lucky that in the end they, no one was caught and that's good for them. But, yeah, it's, it's But, yeah, it's, it is not an easy time, you know? We've been, you know, an irresponsible nation, state, city, you know, it's, and we're on hard times, that's for sure. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just like to clarify something here. When we were gonna lay off the four firemen, we were gonna lay off firemen number 25, 26, 27, 28, the last four guys. Everybody keeps on saying, Al Rickett's been a couple times tonight, we're gonna lay off four. Well, if number one fireman gets laid off, the number 25 fireman comes back on. We're only getting rid of four total. But we can't do that. Through attrition, he's saying we're gonna save $300,000 this year. Through attrition, nobody has retired yet. And nobody may not retire for another six months, maybe two years, we don't know. So, to say we're gonna lose eight guys, we're not. We're gonna lose four, and that's when people get ready to retire. As for having a Fire Chief right now, I would think we should just wait maybe another month to see what's going on.
The, the hiring freeze that was opposed, that we did to the first of the year, you know, when, now that we're looking for savings, that's $169,000, you know? And I know it was opposed, but it's turning out to be beneficial at this point.
At, at what expense, though? I mean, yeah, I, I'm not gonna argue numbers with you, but, you know, what have we cut to do that? We've cut and we've saved money, but we've also cut services in a city that doesn't offer a whole lot to its citizens as far as the taxes that they pay here. So, you know, there's, there's a downside to it as well, Mike, and, and that, that, that has to do with services being provided.
There, there's always a downside, and, and as far as the services, the, the city was looking pretty dismal before we came in five months ago, you know?
I disagree with you there, you know, the, within two years, through recommendations of the, the, the financial repackaging or, excuse me, for the RFP, whatever it is, came forward, the city was in a distressed situation significantly. And within a short two-year period, built a $2.5 million fund balance. So, you know, and it also got better ratings from Moody, the financial system that oversees municipalities across the nation. So, positive steps we're going forward and, as, as I've said a number of times, you know, you build on what you have. You don't tear down to build up. You, you have something, you've got a fund balance, you've got money that was there, that was discussed in previous earlier meetings, where you could offset the pandemic and some of the expenses coming forward through the fund balance and, and additional cuts. Not opposed to cuts, I'm not saying cuts don't need to be made. I know that they do. But I don't think they need to be done at this significant level and more importantly, at a disservice and minus a service to our community and taxpayer.
We, we did talk, oh, one second, we did talk earlier and, and honestly, so if you want, or we can do this later in discussion, did, did your three counselors, did you come up with some suggestions and ideas that can help us? Did you find some money?
If we could have had the meeting that we were supposed to have, I, we were, when we left that meeting, we were going to come, all bring ideas back at the following meeting. I believe it was a Monday meeting, Steve suggested the following Tuesday, we have a special meeting. We didn't even get the opportunity to bring those two because 18 hours later, you had the resolution for a special meeting two days after that.
Well, do you, but there had, some time has passed, Nicole, do you have some? I mean.
I apologize, Mike, I, you know, point order and, and I'm guilty of it as well. We have a resolution here before. And I apologize as well to all because I, I engaged in the conversation and that's, this isn't relevant to the resolution for.
Okay, let's, let's call, oh, yeah, sorry, John.
No, I just wanna point out that we invest, I think it's three or four million dollars in fire, fire safety. So, I don't, I don't think that should be overlooked and I'm curious. I'm curious to how all the other, you know, the volunteer departments and the scene and Potsdam and how they all do all these things without all these difficulties and stuff, but I guess it's, I guess it's a different animal.
I think they have a chief, somebody that applies for grants like that, coordinates.
Five months, whole world's falling down apart. So, okay, then, let's call roll.
Wait, wait a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Everybody gets a chance here. I agree with Mr. Rickett and he's, to a certain extent, and I, and I do believe there should be somebody driving the ship, but I would, my preference is, is there's four assistant chiefs with 107 years combined experience. And if we're concerned about our own department, one of them should step up.
I don't know if they're all, I don't know if they're all qualified. From what I understand in my conversations, there is, there's only one individual on the Fire Department that's interested in this position and there's three that may be qualified. I'm just telling you what I'm being told.
Okay, so, so basically what you're telling me, there's one individual interested in, in, in driving the ship out of a department that you're asking me to pass resolutions for to put basically a name on a paper and, and throw it out there that I, I didn't really get until Thursday afternoon. And, and my preference is, I, I would, I would prefer that an assistant chief that's been in the department combined, like I say, for 107 years, that somebody there, if, if we truly care about the department, would step up.
But, but if they don't want the position, force somebody.
Listen, there's not that long a period of time, there, it's, there's, it's their department. And, and that's why they, that's the definition of assistant chief, Mike, I'm sorry.
I'm not arguing that, I'm not gonna argue that, but you have three candidates that are qualified for the position at this time till the new Fire Safety Officer training is implemented across the state. This isn't, there, there are many people that, that across the state that can't get to be a Fire Chief because of the stringent requirements. And, and this is, we've been talking about this at nauseam for the last six months. Actually, a year, hang on a minute now. So, with that being said, there are three individuals that are qualified out of the Fire Department to, to want this. None of them are stepping forward and asking to be appointed until he can get the, go back to school, get the training, be certified, and be our chief.
And a savings of $10,000. Dan, I agree, but let's have an assistant chief step up.
If they don't want, what if they don't want, Steve, you can't just because you want somebody to step up, have somebody step up. If they don't want it, maybe they're, maybe they're looking at retirement, maybe they don't want the extra responsibility. I, I don't know, and I don't speak for them. You have candidates that want it.
Mike, I can hear you fine.
They're putting the, the best foot forward for the City of Augsburg.
I, I can hear you fine, you don't have to yell.
Not yelling, I, I'm real passionate about, th, th, these, this is what I got from the meeting when I met with the Fire Department.
I respect your opinion, but that's mine.
And I yours, and I'm yours, without question.
So, let me ask, is there a problem with Gerald Mack?
No, I just, I just, soon, I would, I would rather have an assistant chief. Just like if it's a police department, I'd rather have a lieutenant, not, not a sergeant or a, or a patrolman.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have one more question, if I may, Your Honor?
Yeah.
I was just wondering if the Assistant City Manager could add to her list of things to do to, to civil service in Canton, if there is a, a test coming up and to call for a test?
We already have this.
Thought you were gonna ask if we could be the Fire Chief.
I can answer that, actually. The pandemic, and it was explained to us all previously, not too long ago, really, that, that the pandemic has halted all the testing for this period. Much like the whole world has been halted. With that being said, I mean, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Actually, it's not, that's, it's not your, like, they, they didn't, there wasn't a chief test called for. There was a fire, fire test that was called for and it wasn't until three weeks, three, three weeks ago. It was, I, I spoke to her and she, it's to be announced and they are gonna call for a Fire Chief's exam. And, and I don't know if it's gonna be, I, with the county having it now, I think there's a preferred and there's a provision, there's a countywide list that'll go hand in hand.
There's currently a list right now and Jerry Mack is on the list.
With two other candidates that are eligible to take the test.
As an eligible candidate, right.
Right, there's, the, the civil service list, there's two ways to look at that, Dan. It says you have to have three people on it, I've been on it before and, and we didn't use the list for one person.
There are three, there are three eligible people that are eligible to take the test. If you don't have three eligible people to take the test, then you don't have three eligible people. So, you know, but we have three eligible people within the Fire Department, I believe, and don't, don't quote me 100% on this, but I'm quite confident that there's three people that are eligible to take the test to be able to move forward to become the Fire Chief. And I believe one of them is going to apply. I can't say for certain, but that's what I got out of the meetings that I've had.
Any, anyone else?
Gonna save the city money, I mean, I don't know why I wouldn't vote yes, so, I'm voting yes.
Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reed?
No.
Counselor Scampaly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
No.
Counselor Delba?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
DeNig.
Our next item of business will be read by Assistant City Manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution supporting extending the current sales tax agreement between St. Lawrence County and the City of Augsburg for one year. Whereas the current agreement between the St. Lawrence County and the City of Augsburg in relation to the allocation of monies collected from the sales and compensating use tax imposed pursuant to Articles 28 and 29 of the New York State Tax Law expires on November 30, 2020. And whereas the coronavirus pandemic has made it difficult to continue negotiations for a successor agreement. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Augsburg supports the suggestion from St. Lawrence County that an agreement be made to extend the current agreement through November 30, 2021 in order to provide stability as municipalities face the economic impact of the shutdown caused by the pandemic. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be given to the St., to St. Lawrence County so that St. Lawrence County can develop the extension agreement.
Would Counselor like to bring this to motion?
Yes, please, John Reed.
Okay, and a second?
One second.
Discussion?
Yes, I would just like to say that I'm very appreciative of the county legislators for making this offer. I think it gives us a time to, you know, collect some data on sales tax. And, you know, it buys us some time, you know, in relation to the pandemic. I'd like to commend Mayor Skelly for his leadership on this issue. I received today a draft of the agreement which I forwarded to the Assistant City Manager and I asked that it be sent to our attorney, I, I copied the entire council on it, for them to read over and express any concerns that they may have. And I asked the county administrator not to put it on their agenda for Monday until our city attorney has concurred that it meets with the approval of the council.
Do you have the authority to do that?
Yeah, I, I question, you know, why, why is Mr. Reese the go-to here all of a sudden? I mean, that, that, I mean, you know, now we're getting back into charterland again, you know?
You and Dan, you and Dan, Dan, have you, of all people, who, who went to the first negotiation and begged the county not to do that to the $100 million? You, you were gonna let.
Stayed in negotiations at the time, there was no, I wasn't invited to this negotiation. Doesn't matter, I'm gonna vote for this.
Pardon me, we be recognized by the chairman, please, in, in deep order?
Yes.
That bullshit, I'm, I'm so sick of this crap, you guys, what a bunch of horse crap. One violation after another, that's all this is. Call a roll, would you, so we can just vote on this and hear from the public?
You're out of line, Councilman.
You're out of line for the simple fact that you're, you're setting out half-truths. I did sit in a meeting with myself, you, Senator Ritchie, Counselor McKenna, and, and I believe Jim Lagan, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
Aside, you were the one that was steadfast in not supporting this resolution going forward. I don't know what a change of heart is, I'm grateful for it, I am.
You, you were offering the money, you and Sarah were like, oh, we gotta give them a million dollars.
The negotiations are, when you sit at the table and you talk about certain aspects of things. I never supported anything. I, I, I actually, Mr. Reese came up with a comment, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I supported it to one, to one extent. There was a lot of conversation going back and forth, I failed to understand, is that you need to come to the table to be able to have informed decisions, not the resolution.
There's been three counselors that have worked very, very hard. And Dan's been informed, Nicole's been informed, I've talked to both of them. And, and thi, thi, this is, this is important, it's been, ever since that first meeting with the county, I was, I was frightened of the city, of, of the cons, cons, consequences if, if, if they were successful and taking that much money. And I went to Steve's and Steve's worked with me and John's worked with me and we called the fourth counselor and we got consent of counsel and we took our ideas, the three of us, and spoke with the lawyer. And, and, and ever since then, it's been, Sarah brought it up, fed you guys and all your, your conspiracy. This is some big money. Didn't get a million dollars, that, that you were at that meeting and saw that Sarah said she was gonna do it with Tim Johnson. And Dan knew about it, I called him, asked him to talk to Sarah. He told her he didn't want her to do it, but he didn't stop her that night. And, and then you say, oh, it's not like you did, you stopped her. Yes.
Please call the roll.
Yes. Would you please call roll?
Counselor Reed? Counselor Scampaly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Delba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Thankfully, yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to old business. Would anyone like to discuss old business?
I do have an item I'd like to discuss. The City of Augsburg canceled its Major League Fishing this year. And I guess the organizers of the event have been in contact. I guess the organizers of the event have been in contact with Major League Fishing. Uh, they are a little disappointed. And I think, you know, the big thing from the city's avenue was, was we wanted, uh, the most bang we could get for our buck. So I'd like to, uh, ask the Assistant City Manager to uh, reach out to Major League Fishing and I, they're scheduling for next year. They do want to come to Augsburg and I ask that, uh, council support this event. I think it'll be good for business in this town. I think it'll be good for our town in, in long-term in the future of the City of Augsburg. It's going to put us on the map. And I'd like to, uh, make the same agreement that we made this year for next year. And, uh, and get that role and that process going. So I hope everybody supports that.
May I be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, yes. Can you try to speak up some, John, please?
Yes, I will. Um, it's my understanding that the, the turn of the organizers of the tournament canceled the event, not the City of Augsburg.
Uh, not their, not, that's not what they claim. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
And I do, uh, I do support a future event and I would like to see a lot of private sector fundraising so it's not paid for by the taxpayer, the money, fifty thousand dollars. So if we could work toward that goal together, that would be great.
Yep. Any, any further, uh, discussion on this or another subject?
I sat on the committee for the, um, fishing tournament and I think that the ideas that we had going into the event and, um, the vision for the event, I think it would be very beneficial to the City of Augsburg to really pursue doing that. Um, we keep saying we want to market Augsburg. Well, this is our prime chance to do it so we can't let it slip through our fingers just because of this pandemic.
Okay, uh, and I guess this brings us to new business.
Mike, I, I have one other, uh, I thought there was still discussion on the fishing, fishing. A piece of old business, um, regarding the phone in the block of, uh, Green Street, the property, and forgive me if I'm mistaken here. But has, has that property that, that, uh, was voted down to go with Mr. Wade back in, I believe, January, was that put up for auction? A- as requested by council at the time?
A- Andrea wouldn't be able to answer that. I believe it was. Wouldn't, I think we all know that, didn't we?
It was put up for auction in the manner that was required, uh, by council. And, um, we did not get any bids on the property.
Thank you.
Anything else?
May I have the floor?
Yes, John. Just, uh, speak up. It's hard to hear you.
Is your volume setting correct, John?
Um, I think it is.
We can hear you fine earlier. Can you, I can barely make you out.
Can you hear me okay now?
Little bit.
Okay, um, in regards to the concerns about recreation, um, I, I guess I'd ask, uh, the, the Assistant City Manager to develop a plan. Uh, you know, whether it's a combination of DPW and private sector, I, I'm not sure. Uh, I had the idea of maybe doing a contract with the Augsburg Boys and Girls Club, um, where they provide, uh, recreational programs. I don't know if that would work or not. And I don't mean to show favoritism. Maybe there's other organizations that we could contract with. But it is, it's a very legitimate concern expressed by people and we should be working toward that goal of, uh, providing recreation as soon as, uh, the state allows us to, uh, you know, congregate in that. So, thank you.
I, I would, uh, I would support that with, um, Mr., uh, with Mr. Reese there on the basis of, uh, having a few conversations with the executive director at the Boys and Girls Club, recognizing the, uh, the field they have attached to the, uh, to their, their establishment on Patterson Street. Um, I obviously, as you can see, if anybody's paying attention, uh, the, uh, the great work that the, the Boys and Girls Club is doing for the youth in the community and, and the recreation department and, uh, and, and as Mr. Reese said, I wouldn't discount any other organization, but I believe that, uh, that might be something that the Boys and Girls Club might be interested in and, 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 uh, and moving forward. So I, I would support that and, and, and with any entity for that matter, moving forward.
May I be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, in regards to the lawyer being present at our meetings, uh, I, I don't really have any problem with that in the future. Um, I mean, we've been doing it on the basis of, you know, a majority of council. Um, so that, you know, it's not just one individual asking for it. It's a majority, like a democracy normally works. And, um, but I, I, I really don't have any problem with that, you know, moving forward. So that's, that's my feelings.
I, I think Counselor Reese, on that basis, you have to, you can't have three people and say, I don't have them, I can't talk to the lawyer. You, you have to do, call the fourth person. And, and Dan, when, uh, I went to talk to you, to tell you, I was going to tell you, why don't you call me, Dan, I, or one of the other counselors, and then you'd have four. And you had, uh,
Everybody was on the email, Mike.
You, you had a, a, and a, an outburst. You remember that? That's what I was going to tell you. It's like, call one of us, you know? Um, but that lawyer has been working on some really important things for the city and I just think, you know, we don't need to use a lawyer to like, for our, for political stuff. If, if any members of the council have some, some idea to help the city and you want to use the lawyer to develop that idea as, as with the sales tax, then, and all you gotta do is just call a fourth one and, and, uh, and get that, you know, commitment from them.
Before, I could have just answered the email.
With, with that being said, and you made a reference earlier, I believe, of the sales tax agreement resolution when the mayor's conversation came into play. I suggest you getting a fourth, uh, member of council, uh, would create a quorum. And would, uh, would, would, would ultimately have be, uh, an infraction of open meetings law by having a quorum without notice, or putting out a public notice of a meeting. So did you, by, by having these conversations with the mayor, and I'm just asking questions based off questions that come my way, uh, how do you determine a, uh, majority with the mayor, uh, with the city attorney going forward and conducting business on behalf of the city without putting out a public notice or an actual show of hands or an affirmative vote with individuals either online, on the phone, or in a public square holding a meeting, uh, when you, when you've got a majority of four people, which is by open meetings law, an illegal meeting? Like, because you've created a quorum without, without putting out public notice of having a meeting?
Then, there you go. See, you're always looking for a political catch me, catch you. Look at, we, we have four, we have, we are majority.
It's not a violation of the meeting.
We are majority in the council.
It's simply, wow.
We, only three people have ever had a conversation or been together at one time.
You just said you, you, you call for a fourth. You just said it. If you, if you got some-
We have permission. We are majority.
I have emails from the city attorney that you-
Only three people talked.
But I, we've got emails from the city attorney that you see Stephen, the whole council sees Stephen, where he states he won't conduct any meetings without a majority of council. Why be present at a city council meeting without?
You don't want, you don't want a lawyer to do city work. You want a lawyer for your own political benefit.
I supported, I support a city attorney. That's nonsense. Don't spend it.
Where were all the city attorneys when you guys were on the last council? When you guys were on the last council, where was that lawyer? Where was that lawyer during all those contracts and all the stuff that, uh, you just passed those dollars that we don't have?
He was there when we needed him.
We met with him often.
Well, he'll be there when we need him, Dan, if that's the way you guys want to be. I just, we just suggested of how to, to do this. The money is not going to be burned up on your political nonsense. Get, do, come up with something constructive for the city and work on the goal.
It's being burned on your nonsense, on your, on your meetings. That's where our city money's being burned. And, and I, as an, as an elected official, can't answer a constituent as to what it was for, still, to this very day.
May I have the floor, Your Honor?
Okay, so, yes, yes.
So I, I think what's needed here is perhaps, uh, a policy. We need to get along and, and, uh, work through these things. And, uh, I, 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 you know, let's, let's think about a policy moving forward. Uh, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Of, okay, are we on the new business?
Well, I don't know if it would be new or old, but let's, let's call it old. As of the first, I think we're going to hit, start into another phase or, I believe, I could be wrong. Um, I think I would like to get, we can meet with ten people. I'd like to get back into chambers at this point.
I'd be all for it. Executive orders modified by the governor. I'd be all for that.
Well, you can have ten. Right now it's modified enough that we could.
Let's go.
But you're still, to a degree, you're still, you're still limiting citizens. Unless we can have somebody usher in and out through the door if they want to speak.
We, we could, we could do it, we could still do it.
We have any problem with that, Steve.
We could still do it through Zoom. I mean, I just, I just, I think, I think this is part of, this, this, this whole setup, I think, is part of the problem. And I think it can be, I think it can be fixed and it might be a little bit better if we were in the same, same form. Just an opinion, old business. So I'm glad that we could get a consensus to go back. Thank, thank you for that.
Hey, I agree. Let's do it. I want to be seen. I can't be seen here.
Uh, are we done with old business? Are we on the new business? Uh, our Assistant City Manager, Andrea Smith, brought up, um, the fact that we, you know, we do have a lot of work to do. And she should, suggested that we have, instead of one meeting a month through the summer, that we continue with our two meetings. And I, I think we do have a lot of work to do and, uh, I like the idea and I like her initiative on, on coming up with that. Two month, two, two scheduled sessions due to summer. Anybody else like that idea?
I'd be fine with it.
Would we have to, uh, I mean, uh, just a simple addendum here. I, obviously, I, I believe we approved back in January the schedule for the calendar year minus any changes as we go forward. I'm not opposed to it in any way, shape or form, uh, going forward. Uh, but I, I don't know if this needs to be in actual resolution form or not. Uh, just, just based off the fact that, uh, in January, I believe we all voted for the actual calendar. So if we were to modify that, does it require a resolution? I don't know.
We could just call for two extra special meetings.
Yeah, in the past, I, I think we always knew we had business coming up and we would get an item or two that needed to be taken care of in the summer and we would just call a special meeting and, you know, we kind of agree on when we could have it so that we don't-
Andrea told me that a special meeting is a lot of work for Kathy and a lot of work for her. And she thought if they, we did it this way and, and maybe Andrea could tell you the rest of you, but, uh, it just sounded like it would, it saved the staff, uh, extra work if we did it this way.
I'll do it either way.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't matter.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm fine. Now, if it's easier for them to organize and-
Um, could we just take a look at dates, though? There's a couple of dates that I'm already planning to be out of the area and I don't want to miss a meeting and it's not something that I'd be able to attend telephonically or by video and I don't want to miss a meeting. So I just request that maybe we could send an email with dates that will not work. Nothing says they have to be on a Monday. Um, just if everybody could shoot dates that don't work and then we could try to accommodate everyone.
Sounds like a plan.
I, I believe the city clerk has done that numerous times for us and, yes, that sounds good.
He does like a doodle poll or something, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yep. Um, on another note, um, you know, people have called about the, the tennis courts and, and so, uh, Deb actually saw the work being done down there, uh, by DPW and at, uh, the Biskie Center. And, um, it was, it's quite impressive, uh, of the work they've been doing, the DPW and the cleanup. And, um, I'd like to, to thank them all. It's, you know, their effort is truly going above and beyond and I really appreciate it.
Just to add to that, um, so I pointed out that there's like four or five lights out on the Maple City Trail. And those haven't been fixed yet. I was hoping that those could be fixed in the near future. And if they could take a look at the old pump house building and maybe they'd have time to like, uh, you know, paint the, uh, bordered up windows and stuff, get rid of the graffiti and things and the refrigerator that's down there.
Yeah.
Also, regarding, regarding the crescent, the hill, there's, uh, the hill that's been cleaned from the, uh, the Jork Park all the way to the pump house. There's a lot of debris up and down that hill and I know it's pretty treacherous, uh, I walk it every day and it's, uh, it's pretty treacherous, uh, goings, but, uh, it, it, there's, there's a lot of debris in there that needs to be cleaned up as well. We could pass that along as well.
Sure they'll, they'll do their best. Um, anyone else? Anything?
Yes. In regards to the, uh, I guess you'd call it a petition to save our prisons. I certainly didn't mean to step on Counselor Powers' toes in any way, shape or form. I just, uh, I felt-
I can't hear you, John.
No, in regards to the petition about saving the prisons, um, I just wanted to bring that up and give an update on that. And I didn't mean to step on Counselor Powers' toes in any way, shape or form. So the current situation is, is that, uh, oh, I think we collected about three hundred signatures on, uh, uh, over the weekend there. Counselor Fisher's got about two hundred and twenty signatures. The young lady that started the online petition, who I'm very grateful for, has about three hundred and forty-four signatures.
Thanks.
We're at about eight hundred and sixty-four now. I know that some of the, uh, corrections officers took petitions to the prison. I don't know the status of that yet and I hope they would reach out to me. So I guess the goal is to get about a thousand. And because this is timely, and I'll defer to Mr. Power, my concern, you get the petition out to the governor, probably this week, like Thursday or Friday, and I have a lot of work to do about that. So if that's okay, Mike, I'd like to move forward with that.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just one entity, John, and, and, you know, I, uh, you know, I discussed all this in emails with all you guys and, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this, as I explained many weeks ago in chamber. There's, uh, there's an awful lot to this. There's, uh, state budget, there's a pandemic, there was a deficit prior to this pandemic hitting New York State. And, uh, a lot of it depends on the federal stimulus program. We deal with prison closures as, uh, uh, in my role as the president and, and through many. Uh, many entities and communities have, uh, certain aspects, uh, uh, as to how they go about it. In the last couple of years up here, there are certain programs that exist in our facilities that offset any potential book, if you will. And that's the concern that I made going forward. And one of the things that we do and that we concern ourselves with a lot of times is drawing attention to yourself. And, uh, I don't believe, and, and I, it's not that I don't support it. I'm happy to fill my name on it. I haven't gotten a response from anybody as to where I can go to put a name on a petition. Uh, I'm not on Facebook. Uh, occasionally I log in because I have a page, but I, I do it for more work purposes than anything else. Um, uh, and, uh, from that standpoint, I mean, going forward, I don't, I'm not opposed to it in any way, shape or we have a strong community activism here that was chaired back in 2010. A lot of things have changed as far as prison closures from 2010 to today. Uh, years ago in 2010, the, the governor knows his budget and he would announce the facility closures, which gave you time from January until the actual budget session ended on April 1st, uh, with, with the state senate, assembly and the executive. And with that being said, uh, you had opportunities to fight it. Now you don't. And now the governor has executive power to be able to execute a facility within 90 days. And he's warned of certain situations and I applaud the effort, but as I mentioned, you have activism here that has direct connections to certain entities, myself being one of them, to the governor's office and to the leadership in the New York State Senate and the New York State Assembly, to all three branches in, in leadership. And not only that, but the task force as well that was put together. And those were my concerns going forward. It, I, I don't have concern, I should, let me rephrase. I don't have concerns regarding the petition, but going forward, I think ultimate communication with a task force that was in place, which we met after we met with Senator Ritchie, myself and Mike. Met with Senator Ritchie and, and, and many, many members of the task force. You have governor, you have a community effort here and a countywide effort from Watertown, pretty much all the way up into really the confines of Franklin County. That exists because many of the employees work or live in those communities and commute to our facilities. So this has a broad impact and I, and I just, I would request going forward, before anything gets sent out, to, to convene the, the, the task force, to reach out to the local unions, to our state representatives and to go forward as, and, and much of this was already discussed in the task force meeting. And I'm not saying that you have to listen to the task force, but they're a very viable entity and a, a very viable resource that we've used in this community each and every year, whether you see us vocally or, 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 uh, prominently amongst the community, communities, I should say, going forward, i- is, is not relevant to say that, that they're not doing anything because they are and we are and I do every day. And all I ask is before going forward with anything, and I'll, one, allow us to put ours names on it. And more importantly, before you send it out, let's all sit down and have a frank discussion about some of the politics and the state budget and, and some of the things going forward before anything gets done, to raise any concerns going forward that we can share going forward. From our perspective, I deal with this every day for hours. And my schedule has no, my workdays have no schedule. I get calls at 10 o'clock at night, 2 o'clock in the morning, 5 o'clock in the morning, all day, every day. And that's what I ask, just going forward. Let's all sit down, meet with the entities as a council as a whole, our state representatives, our local union officials and talk about the issues that they have gone forward and quite frankly, the programs that are in place. That'll probably not have to warrant having anything done. It's information gathering. That's all I ask.
Yeah, no, we, we send it out to everybody and we were there, um, you know, all day, but, um, Pat, Pat Kelly came down, put his signature on it and we'll, we'll make sure it gets out more. We need, we want more signatures. Uh, but, you know, the task force met March 5th, you know, it's about three, almost three months. Um, you know, we, um, yeah, I think, I think it was a good thing to get, get, uh, you know, things started, get people thinking. But anyways, um, anything else?
Can I get a one question? Do you, so you think the petition was a bad thing, Mike?
I didn't say that. I, I'm, I'm offering to put my name on it. Of course not. Didn't say that at all.
I can, I can hear you. Okay, no, I just, because what if it went the other way and we didn't do it? You know what I mean? What, what, what if it went, it goes the other way and we didn't do it?
Unfortunately, Steve, that, that, that's, that's, that's what's out there. It's the, the executive power, as I mentioned, the, the, the whole process has changed dramatically. And, and, and what I was getting at, basically saying that going forward, if we all communicate, we might take a different direction. That's all I'm saying. That's what I said in my emails. That's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not opposed to a petition. I just offered to put my name on it. I'm asking you guys to let us know where we can go and put our names on these things.
Yeah.
I'm opposed to it.
I'll, I'll bring it to you.
Yeah.
Well, I asked for it in the email. Anyway, listen, regardless. I, I said what I said. It's all in email. It's all the information's there. All I'm asking for is to be able to have a sit down, very frank discussion about this issue. And I can inform you of the day-to-day operations and bring you up to speed with how we deal with it. And the fireworks and that. That's all I'm asking.
That, that's fine. I'm, I'm all for it. And there was nothing but good intentions for every one of those employees. And, and, and do whatever was possible to save those jobs if, if it came down to it.
So I never said, I never said that. Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I, and I said that in my email. I know the intent was pure and it was, uh, and it was for the good. I'm just asking to have informed discussions so that we could bring you guys up to speed with the dynamics in front of us. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. If we're all done, we'll go on to the next. We sat?
We're still on new business, Mike?
Uh, yeah, do, do, is there more new business? Anyone?
I, I just have one real quick and, and I, I know that we've had a significant transition at City Hall recently. Uh, but regarding the, uh, the, you know, the potential reopening places that are coming forward and how the city of Augsburg, uh, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure this is going to have to filter through Andrea in her new role and, uh, but, but, you know, as the Assistant City Manager. But, uh, she's currently sitting in the, in the position and, and as to how we're going to open here going forward. Um, a- as far as this COVID pandemic, because you're starting to see the rollout significantly across the state. And I'm curious to know, uh, uh, what discussions have been had, if there's been any discussions had regarding this. And if not, I think we're, we're, you know, we're going to need to do that sooner than later.
Um, I'm glad that you asked, Counselor. Today, uh, well, let me start by saying that one of the tasks that Sarah had given me before, uh, leaving was to be in charge of developing the protocol for how the city will reopen municipal facilities. So I have been looking at that for the last several weeks and monitoring the guidance from CDC as well as from New York State. Um, I've had conversations with the court officers here in City Hall, as well as I've reached out to, um, the county administrator, Ruth Doyle, to better understand what the county's plans are and how they intend to reopen facilities. Uh, just today, actually, um, all city employees received the, the first protocol for employees primarily, uh, which requires that all masks, uh, or masks and face coverings be worn when you're in common areas, um, essentially when you're outside of your office, in any situation where six feet, uh, cannot be maintained. Um, in preparation for when facilities do open to the public. It also sets in place a protocol that is, um, adapted from what the New York State Courts system will be using for what happens if an employee or member of the public is diagnosed with a positive test that has recently been in a facility. Um, it is my intention that you all will also receive a copy of that if you haven't already. Um, and we have started having conversations today about how council chambers will need to be modified to accept the public once again. Um, the biggest concern with the council chambers right now is how best to sanitize the facility after it's been used because so many of the surfaces are soft surfaces, uh, being seat cushions and carpet. Um, so today's discussion, um, among other things, we were talking about alternative locations for public gatherings. Um, including, uh, potential, holding potential public gatherings in the arena where chairs and tables are more easily sanitized. So there's more to come on that, uh, but we are having those conversations now in preparation for opening to the public, um, in the, in the coming weeks and months. I mean, as, as everything evolves. So we're, we're watching that and monitoring it pretty closely. And the protocol for employees goes into effect starting tomorrow.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thanks.
I have a question. Um, what I've been asked, what is the plan for the Dubisky Center? Will it be manned during the day? With the recent layoffs, um, who do, who do boaters contact if there are any issues in the marina? Um, all of those things have been questions I've been getting. Um, is the boater's lounge going to be accessible once this is over? Um, things like that. Those are some questions we could get out to people or we could maybe put that out on the city's webpage, some answers, contact information. These people do pay a lot to put their boats in the marina and they want to guarantee that they're still going to get the services they've always gotten.
Sure. Um, I will definitely put together a more comprehensive response to those questions. What I can tell you at this point is it is my understanding that the boater's lounge is open and is available to, uh, boaters through their, the FOB that they have with their rental slips at this time. Uh, the rest of the, of the building will be closed to the public. It has been closed to the public. It will continue to be closed to the public. And we will be having conversations about some of the questions that you just asked over this week as the two employees that would have ordinarily had offices there, uh, this is their last, their last week.
Right.
So I will certainly put together a more comprehensive response, but I can answer you with regards to the boater's lounge. That should be open. If there are boaters that are having issues accessing the lounge, uh, please make sure that they, um, contact me, I guess, and let me know.
Okay, I just, as long as we can get something comprehensive. I think during this transition, the more, um, information we can have out there. I think people are unsure of who the point of contact would even be. Um, so I think just putting that out there, um, is, is making sure everybody knows and being as transparent as we can with this.
Absolutely.
Um, may I be recognized, Your Honor?
Uh, yes, uh, just, uh, try to speak loudly, John. Thank you.
Okay, no, so, uh, in regard to our future meetings, um, I think they should be held in the council chambers. I'm not in favor of an alternative site. Um, and they should be live streamed so that, uh, I think that's the protocol right now. So if you could look into that as well, um, that would be great. And if people don't want to attend for health concerns, we have Skype and, uh, live streaming would be great. That's what, uh, most towns, county and villages have been doing for some time. We're a little bit behind the eight ball on all that. So if we could, uh, take that into consideration, that'd be great.
Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, some items for discussion? Yes?
I, I could do it under items for discussion.
Um, Assistant City Manager Andrea Smith will, um, will discuss the police chief vacancy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to take this opportunity to speak with council, um, about the upcoming vacancy in the position of police chief. I wanted, uh, unfortunately, I don't have too much of an update. I am still awaiting the, I have requested the eligibility list from civil service and, uh, unfortunately I have not yet received that list. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to obtain that this week. There seems to be a couple technical glitches. Uh, the list was provided to the previous, to previous administration staff who are required to sign off on it. Um, but that didn't happen and I'm, we're not quite sure where that form is. And so civil service is having a, a bit of a challenge on their end. So we're working through that with them. Um, the position of police chief is a civil service tested position. Um, and so if there is an eligibility list, it is my understanding that the position um, is to be filled from that list, uh, in accordance with New York State statute as well as our charter. So I, I don't have a lot of answers for you in terms of who's on the list, how many are on the list, or if the list exists, because I haven't yet been able to obtain it. But I also just wanted to, uh, give council the opportunity to provide any feedback on, um, on the upcoming vacancy.
Thank you. Um, does anyone else have any items for discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a couple and this is more of a question, Andrea, and, uh, how recently the, um, the additional funds for the land bank and, uh, you know, that's, that's, that's such a great job. But one of my, I, what I want to know is, um, uh, going forward, you know, I, I really think we need to, um, come together and start thinking, uh, as to how this housing stock in the city of Augsburg, this is always, this is something I used to bring up with Counselor Scamp early years ago on the council. As to, uh, you know, we, we've got an older, older housing stock here in the city of Augsburg. We don't see a whole lot of new stuff built. Um, you know, obviously we need to bring some jobs and, 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 and get back to business here and, and, and bring some jobs into the community, well-paying jobs for individuals and families. Be able to purchase these older homes and refurbish them. And more importantly, how do we keep our young here? And, and bring them back after they leave and, and, and further education or stay, join the workforce. But, uh, I, I, I just kind of like to, to see what other options are out there. Uh, and Land Bank's doing a wonderful job and I'm not skirting that in any way, shape or form, but I, I think going forward, uh, this needs to be something of, uh, of, of concern that we need to really seriously take a look at, uh, uh, going forward. Um, you know, a- as I mentioned, a lot of our housing stock is very, very old and a, a lot of it was built in the late 19th century and, and, uh, or 20th century. And so going forward from there, I think, I think that's just something that we need to, to, to address going forward. And, you know, obtaining that additional money, Andrea, is a great job. Land Bank and, and speaking with, uh, Mr. Cosmo recently, uh, you know, good, good things are happening there and glad to see it going forward. And I think we need to keep that momentum going forward in any endeavor that we can pursue. I also have one more a- a- additional item. And this, this reflects back on, uh, and, and I kind of got hit off here by an email from a citizen that asked a certain question and, and I'm not relevant, uh, or certain, but, um, if, if certain individuals at council are aware of a workplace violence complaint that was filed against them as to how they could possibly vote yea or nay for it. And, uh, I'm not privy to myself being, uh, alleged to have created that, but, uh, uh, they wanted it on the record and I told them I'd do it. So, uh, with that being said, um, I'm kind of curious to know if, if, if that's the case as to how anybody could vote for it. Uh, if, if they're, if they're alleged to have violated the policy, the law, quite frankly, workplace violence is a law. It was established in 2006, uh, through the federal government and for an incident that happened in Ohio. And, uh, uh, so going forward, I'm, I'm, uh, you know, I just want that on the record.
Does anyone else have more for discussion? Okay, then this brings us to citizen participation. At this time, if you would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time. You have two minutes to speak.
Okay, Mayor. Person I see that has a hand up is registered as Henry in Catherine's charge. So I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. That, that person has now disappeared. I'm not sure if they're having technical difficulties. With your permission, you're With your permission, Your Honor, I'll move on to the next and then
Yes.
we can circle back. Okay, the next individual is registered as Doug Loffler. And I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted and it appears that you are due to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, first of all, Mayor, you just, you just said I had two minutes to speak.
Yes.
Okay, could I, could you please do me a favor and call a roll by the city clerk that says that I only have two minutes to speak? I just, I just need that. There's a Civil Liberties Act that prohibits anybody from being timed at a public meeting. So just so that you're aware of it.
Doug, I only do what has been done before.
That's fine. I'm just putting you on notice. Okay, first, my first question I'd like to address to Counselor Reese. John? John?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, you've, the last couple of meetings have questioned the fleet vehicles that wanted more, more price, you know, different things. And I'll go back to my original question to you is how many city attorney firms were talked to or interviewed or you got a quote from at the beginning?
We went out to request for a proposal and it was open to anybody in any law firm. And we received one response, but we did go out for a proposal.
You did. Did, was there any local attorney firms?
Yeah, that was my concern, Doug. I really wanted local firms and that was my emphasis all along and for going out to like quotes and everything. And unfortunately, none of the local firms responded.
Okay, that's, that's great because I did, as I said to you earlier today, I had two people, local firms, during this meeting contacted me and said that they were not contacted. So that's fine. My next question is if you're going to have, continue to have your meetings viral like this, depending on what the pandemic goes, maybe the two counselors that we cannot see to go to City Hall, one sit at one end, one sit at the other so we can see each other. And Counselor, you know, Counselor Dillabow mentioned earlier on a resolution about a witch hunt. Well, there's no more witch hunt than what happened to the previous city manager. And you know what? Yeah, you might not be able to work with her, but that lady did a great job for us before you guys came. If she makes the mistakes, we all make mistakes, just like you guys are, just like I have, just like everybody has. But you know what? She did do some good. And the same thing goes to, and I was really kind of disappointed tonight that I haven't heard anything, is, you know, you got a police chief that's retiring. And you might not agree with the way politically he agrees, whatever, but you know what? He spent his whole life working here. He went up through the ranks and he became a great police chief. And he did, you know, if Counselor Fisher, you worked with him, you know? And I think that guy needs from the city administration, I think that guy needs at least say, thank you very much for all the hard work you did, okay? Hope you enjoy your retirement. You guys got to, you've got to get over the hump here, boys. That's got to happen, okay? Whether you agree with them or not, the biggest thing is, is you got to respect each other's opinion and that's not happening. And my last, my last point to you guys is, you know, you know, you might have to open up the pool. And Mayor Skelly and I had this talk there a little while ago. When you open that pool, you need a certified pool operator. You don't have a recreation director. There's nobody at the DPW that's a certified pool operator. Is there anybody at the DPW that knows how to hire lifeguards? What the qualifications are for water safety instructor and lifeguard? You guys got to plan that, okay? And that's a big task because you know what's going to happen? That's going to come real quick. So you got to get, you got to get going on that. That's all I got to say tonight and I'm glad that Counselor Fisher said we get back in the open session because I'm for one, I like to talk and I like to look at you eye to eye and I know you guys would like to do the same thing. So I really appreciate your time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next individual is registered as Jennifer Stevenson and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open.
Thank you very much. I would like to request that at your first meeting in June, that the public be given an update on the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. My understanding is that project is moving along. It's a $40 million project to the city. It is, it is integral to any future development of the city and it's been quite some time since I've heard anything with that. I did devote the last three years when I was on council with that project and I just wish that we could have an update to the public. So I am requesting that you consider that council to put that on the June 8th agenda so we know where that stands. Thank you very much.
Next individual is registered as, I'm sorry.
With John Rees again, and I also would like an update on the wastewater treatment plan and I don't have any information on it, so Jennifer bringing that up.
Mayor, if I may, I believe that our meeting has timed out. We still have audio and we can hear, but on my computer, I do not have control.
Okay.
Deputy clerk has video. Can you please tell me if you can still see?
Yes, yes, we can. I see you there.
Okay. Okay, all right. Well, that's good. I've just lost, I've lost my functionality. I'm going to see real quick if I can transfer, transfer the controls over to the deputy clerk. If you could just bear with me for one moment, I apologize.
I'd make a motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Yeah, that does sound reasonable. It is late. Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Is there public that still wants to speak?
I don't think they can come on. I think she lost.
I have something to say if that's allowed.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to be known that four council members tonight decided to cost the city $3,300 a month because of your narrowed-sightedness of the events in our department. It's unbelievable that when you have sheer numbers in your face, that you choose to vote against that. My suggestion to the four of you is that you gather at Mike Skelly's house tonight after the meeting, plug Alexa back in and teach her how to run this city. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion, is there more or?
Mayor, I did have a request for an executive session on, to discuss the employment history of a particular person on the agenda.
Yeah, well, and that will, will we go back to the way we did with our other number? Exactly how we did before?
Those are the instructions that I have been given from the city clerk. I have also asked that City Commissioner Tim Johnson join us for the executive session.
Yeah. Okay, is everyone agreeable?
Mayor?
Yes.
May I be recognized and offered?
Yes, 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 Counselor.
I'm just wondering, Andrea, if that needs to be addressed tonight or if we can wait?
Counselor, it is a bit time sensitive.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Citizen participation complete?
Mayor, if I, if I may address that.
Counselor Powers, unfortunately, my system is the host and I have lost all control.
Other than the ability for you to continue, I am unable to confirm that someone else does not wish to address council. I am trying desperately to get it to allow me to reconnect as the host, but unfortunately, it's not looking promising.
Thank you, Kathy.
Also, Mayor, if I may, you have a, you have a motion on the floor from Counselor Reese, a motion to adjourn with a second, and I believe it was Counselor Dillabow. So if you intend to move forward with the executive session, I was hoping that perhaps Counselor Reese would withdraw that motion and then maybe we could get a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session?
Yes, ma'am, I withdraw my request.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, then I guess we're going to proceed now? Okay, so we're going to the session, right? Yes.
Is there action?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. Is it going to be action?
I do not anticipate that there will be a need for action. The instructions that Kathy provided did allude to that. It's more informational for the council.
Can we adjourn after that, Your Honor?
All right, so.
Can we adjourn?
Can we adjourn right now and then just go to the executive session that we're doing? No.
We adjourn after, I move to adjourn after executive.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't see, I apologize, but I can't see who's speaking because I've lost my control. So it's my understanding there is a motion by the mayor to adjourn to executive session, but I do not know who seconded that.
Don't matter.
And then I understand that there is a motion from Counselor Powers to adjourn from executive session and I apologize, I did not get a second on that either.
I second that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So Mayor, if you would like to ask if all are in favor, then we can proceed.
Yes, Kathy, please call the roll on executive session.
Yes, sir. Counselor Scamp early?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabow?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Approved. So at this time, I will take the connection like we did for the previous executive session so that we can move forward with that.
May I, may I ask a question?
Of course.
Counselor Powers asked that we adjourn after executive session and he has a motion on the table. Can we vote on that as well?
Absolutely. Is that how you'd like me to proceed, Mayor?
Yes, would you please call the roll on that adjournment?
Certainly, certainly. Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabow?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamp early?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, do you have an executive session?
Thank you, Kathy, Brittany and Andrea for all, for hanging in there and more importantly, Miss Underrails.
Thank you, sir.
You entered, no digits, please re-enter your answer. To enable audio control, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash dot. The organizer has not yet started the meeting. It will be placed on hold until an organizer starts Go to Meeting. You will be placed on hold until an organizer starts "Go to Meeting."